... as the Board of County Commissioners zoning hearing, and I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Kerner?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Sacks?
Here.
Mayor Weinroth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Here. Vice Mayor, would you please do the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Would everybody please rise?
Before I do our invocation this morning, I'd like everybody to take a moment of silence for the children and the families in Texas who were brutally murdered this week. Thank you. We pray for the whole human family. Many nations are torn by war. Grant them peace and healing of their divisions. Many communities are filled with crime. Grant them deliverance from fear and hope of renewal. Many families are divided by hate. Grant them unity and the blessings of love. Many children are abandoned and afraid. Grant them someone who loves them and the promise of a future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And obviously, the events in Texas are impacting all of us here. We've seen this over and over again, and it's something that needs to stop. If you may have noticed, the flags are half-mast here in Palm Beach County and the state, and I think federally. And this is just something that has become too commonplace, and hopefully, our representatives in DC are considering something to do to try and stop this. All right, let's move on to our agenda today. Do we have notice?
Yes.
Okay. Proof of publication?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. Motion was made by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed. It's, let's do swearing-in for anybody who's going to be testifying or presenting today.
Everyone who wants to testify or speak on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see we have a few changes to the agenda. Would you like to present them, please?
Yes, we have a few modifications to our agenda. Item number one, 2021-1954 for Terranova. The applicant requested postponement to June 23rd. No motion will be necessary on that. Item number eight, Elizabeth Street at Square Lake, 2021-2038. The applicant also requested a postponement to June 23rd. Their letter is attached also to the add delete. Item number nine, Evergreen Townhouse, request to postpone to June 23rd. Again, their letter attached to the add delete. PGA Waterfront, 2021-1612, postponed to June 23rd. And again, their request is attached to the add delete. On the regular agenda, F7 for Found MUPD, we have an amendment to engineering condition number two. And then, if the Board doesn't choose to postpone PGA Waterfront, item number 10, there are two amendments to engineering conditions two and eight. We also, under the executive director, will have a presentation on commercial vehicles. That's not on the add delete.
That's the end of the add delete. Okay. I'm gonna look for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. All right, our agenda has been approved. We're gonna move on now to postponements.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner McKinley. I'm sorry, not used to having you there.
Just a workshop. On the executive director's comments on the commercial vehicles, I know it's not traditional procedure or protocol to accept public comments, but I'd like to at this time rather than wait till later to have that conversation. If there are any members of the public here today on that item, allow them an opportunity to speak.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Moreno?
Oh, sorry, no. I was the one who made the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm aware that we've adopted the agenda as amended, but are there any items that we had, we have to vote on to postpone?
We do.
Yeah, we're gonna get to those in a second. I'm just gonna make sure that we're all set as far as administrative. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Commissioner. All right, we have postponements. Obviously, A1 is one we don't have to deal with that's by right, so that is going to be postponed to June 23rd. So we now have a motion before us to postpone item A, I'm sorry, B?
I'll make a motion.
You're gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We postpone item B. Item eight, A8.
A8, okay. A8 being Z2021, zero two, excuse me, 038 Elizabeth Street at Square Lake. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no objection, all in favor, all opposed, show that item eight has now been postponed to June 23rd, 2022. I'll accept a motion on item nine.
I will postpone item A9.
Okay, I have a motion, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. That's on item 2020-02103, Evergreen Townhouse, to be postponed to June 23rd, 2022. All in favor, all opposed, show that has been postponed to June 20, June 23rd, 2022.
And I'll make a motion to postpone item 10, A10.
I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. I haven't been up here for one meeting, and I'm having trouble. Postponing to June 23rd, all in favor, all opposed. That is, that has now been moved to June 23rd. All right, now, before we move on with the consent agenda, I believe we have one item that one of our members wants to remove from the consent agenda. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to pull an item for discussion from the consent agenda, and that is, just looking for it.
You have three to choose from.
The racetrack, which is no longer a racetrack.
Good to have a seatmate who's a county administrator. That would be under H5, on their consent agenda. Number five, page six, top of page six.
All right. H5 being the redesignation of certain unused vacant county own land. Is that the one that you're looking at?
That is correct, sir.
All right, that is not on the consent agenda.
Yes, it is.
It is?
It's item G5.
Oh, all right, it is the head on. All right. Okay, then we're gonna remove H from the consent agenda. Anybody else have anything else they want to move from the consent agenda? Okay. So let's do our disclosures on the consent agenda. Commissioner Sacks, why don't you start the consent?
No disclosures.
You have no disclosures? Okay, Commissioner Bernard?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
No disclosure.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno?
No, thank you, not at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
None.
Thank you, and I have none either. Okay, so we're gonna deal with the consent agenda, and we've removed item H5 from the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus H5.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, do we have any cards?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor, except those few.
Let's see what we got up here. Seven, ten. It looks like we're okay. All right, so I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed, show that the consent agenda without item H has been approved by a vote of seven to zero. All right, let's move on to item H5.
Item H5 relates to redesignation of county-owned land, and as described in the backup, relative to road right-of-way to natural area, and allow it to be incorporated within the Pine Glades natural area. I will turn it over to our Director of Environmental Resource Management, Deborah Drum, so she can do a presentation for you.
Hi, good morning. Deborah Drum, Director of Environmental Resources Management, also here with Robert Kraus, who is on our staff and my partner here today. This item requests a redesignation of unused vacant county-owned land, which was designated as road right-of-way around our Pine Glades natural area. And we have coordinated with the engineering department and verified with them that there is no intention of using this road right-of-way for future road purposes. Whenever we have the opportunity to add additional layers of protection to our conservation lands, we do so. This abandonment of the road right-of-way and redesignation will be incorporated into the boundaries of the natural area, of the Pine Glades natural area. And it will add 13 acres of land around that buffer of our natural area as it interfaces with private property. The addition of that buffer, we feel, will assist in protecting the natural area. We do plan on managing the area, and it also, having it designated as part of our natural area, will allow our Wildlands Task Force, through the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, to enforce any illegal activity in that area. So the subject lands that we're talking about, the 13 acres, and it's relatively intact native upland and wetland communities, and it serves as a good buffer between the natural area and the developed parcel. Again, we agree to accept that management responsibility, and engineering agrees with this item. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Drum. Commissioner Moreno, did you have any remarks or questions on this item? I'm sorry. Commissioner Sacks?
That's okay. Commissioner Sacks, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, was there already a light by Commissioner Moreno?
It wa, I knew it was coming. Who wants to go first?
No, I have absolutely no qualms with this. This is in my district. This is something that's necessary to be done. I appreciate you clarifying for us why this is getting, is getting done, and I would make a motion that we approve.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Sacks, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I sure would. Thank you. May I do it at this time?
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. Hi, Drum. Good to see you. And I respect your professional opinion on these areas, and I know you're a great advocate for our wildlife areas. I have a question, a couple of questions, because I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this. I just pulled it, because I need to know a little more, especially since the zoning commission en masse voted against it. My question to you is this.
I didn't know.
How many years has this been a natural wildlife area there in the, is it called Pinelands?
Pine Glades natural area?
Yes. How many years have we owned this, and it's been preserved as a natural area?
I think we're talking about over 10 years now.
We don't have the exact date for you, Commissioner, but it looks like over a decade, unless you know.
It's a long time, in other words.
Dedicated in 1962, if that helps.
Okay. The right-of-way was designated in 1962, but the natural area has come in play at least the last decade.
And what we're talking about is abandonment of a paper road. A road that we designate as a roadway, but really isn't a roadway. Is that what we're, and I see a nodding of yes. So that would be correct, that it's, it's not a roadway, it's, it's a barrier.
It would have, it is designated to be a road in the case, in the event that the county would want to create that road. And we have, we've confirmed with engineering that they don't have the intention to create a road there. And so what we do with the natural areas is we put as many layers of protection to protect natural areas as we can. And sometimes that's in the form of a conservation easement, and sometimes that's in the form of additional buffer lands, where we have lands adjacent to a natural area that we can incorporate into the boundary, and that's the case here. And the reason that, because it was county-owned right-of-way, right, and it was a coordination between departments where we could easily incorporate that 13 acres, additional acres into our natural area, that was why we felt, from a conservation perspective, this made a lot of sense.
But it is part of a conservation, this paper roadway that circles the motorsports.
There are no more motorsports there.
And, sorry, Commissioner Moreno, may I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. May I, Mayor? May I respond to another commissioner?
Absolutely.
I believe that there's a contract pending, but the, the asset, the private facility, is still there.
May I respond?
Absolutely.
Okay. The owners of the facility are in contract. They have closed and shuttered the facility. As a matter of fact, they've even gotten rid of some of the fixtures on the facility. It is no longer going to be a racetrack. As a matter of fact, the organization that was interested in buying it and maintaining as a racetrack has put a contract in on acreage in Martin County. So there is no, no more need or interest for racing to continue on that site.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Ms. Drum, going back to our questioning and giving me an education and information on this, who owns the property that, who still owns the property that is adjacent to this paper roadway?
We do. The Pine Glades natural area?
Yeah. And who owns the property on the other side of this paper roadway?
I'll defer to zoning staff to answer any questions about the private parcel.
And anybody can answer, who knows, please.
I don't have the exact name, but it, Moroso or Portman LLC, there's a couple.
Portman is the person, Portman is the.
Excuse me, Commissioner, is the, is the present owner today of that property? That's what I want to know. Who is, I know there's a contract pending.
Palm Beach International Raceway is the present owner, and it has a contract for purchase with Portman Industrial.
Exactly. Thank you. So Commissioner Moreno, just, and I'm getting information as well as you are. The actual owner of that property is still International Raceway, which has, there's a contract pending with another owner, but the actual owner today is International Raceway. So let's go back to what we were talking about. This paper roadway that circles the present owner, which is International Raceway, has that, that's been there since 1962. Why have we maintained this, this barrier? I call it a barrier, because it's not, it's paper roadway, but it's also a barrier between the raceway, the owner today, and our, our natural wet, not wetlands, pine, is it called Pinewood?
It's called Pine Glades natural area.
Thank you. Do you know what?
What, the question was, why do we, why have we maintained?
Why have we maintained it there since 1962?
We, we, I mean, why has it been designated as a road right-of-way since 1962?
Let me make it a little bit, let me make it easier. Why are we removing this today, since it's been there since 1962?
So it's not uncommon for ERM to look or become aware of road right-of-way that are in our natural areas, or to see these opportunities come up. There's been a lot of attention in this area. The opportunity came up for us to see that we could add 13 acres to the natural area boundary, and so we've decided to bring this forward now.
So no other reason than, let's do it today. It's been there since 1962, but let's go ahead and, and release county ownership on this, this, this barrier between the present owner and, and the, and the Pine Glades.
I think you may be misstating the facts, and I think we need to clarify exactly what's going on so that we don't get too far into the weeds on this.
I can speak a little bit about the timing. So the vision for this general area is called the United Technologies overlay. This area was envisioned since the 60s as having industrial land uses, and that's why Pratt Whitney has special, this special area is a special overlay. And the idea was for acres and acres and acres of industrial land has been here for many, many years. So this, Moroso predates the purchase of county lands for natural areas surrounding it. It basically, that roadway was planned in the 60s because the vision was this to be all industrial. Over time, the county has purchased natural areas, and so that's why the road was there. It predated our purchase program. I don't believe in the 60s we were purchasing naturally sensitive lands. I mean, perhaps we were, but I do know that the, the facility itself and those roadways were planned for industrial development, and over time, we're the ones who came after with the purchases and the designation of environmental land. So that's a little bit about the timing that might help.
Mr. Rutter, would you like to help?
Just one point to clarify on. There's no change in ownership. It's county-owned. It's a change of the designation of who maintains the property. So it was effectively set aside for potential future right-of-way someday, maybe. That has been found to not be needed, not be the case. The maintenance of it would flip over to Environmental Resources Management. You will, in the future someday, see this property added to the Pine Glades Natural Area Management Plan. It will enhance that, add the 14-ish acres to that land area, but there's no change in ownership that's occurring.
All right.
Okay, so let me go back to my questions, because I really need to know why, from 1962, we are going to abandon this area, 13 acres, and why now? What benefit will it do to the county to abandon this 13 acres? And what benefit, if you know, or if anybody here knows, would it be to the prospective owner of this International Raceway? And anybody can answer this on staff? Deb, I don't wanna.
No, this is, that's fine. This item, this ERM item is focused on the redesignation of the right-of-way to incorporate those 13 acres into the natural area. So the benefits of that is to add the 13 acres to the Pine Glades natural area, is to ensure that roads, which would have been adversely impactful to the natural area, will never be constructed within those roads, right-of-way. So it takes away that future designation that currently exists, it takes that away from consideration, and we know that we've got the higher protections through the natural areas ordinance of, of adding these 13 acres to the property. It'll also ensure that the vacant road, road right-of-way, they remain available for water storage, water filtration, water recharge, wildlife use. These are all the benefits of natural areas. And it will also ensure that the native upland and wetland vegetation communities that are within that designated right-of-way is protected and managed for environmental purposes in perpetuity. Those are the benefits.
None of those benefits were present before we wanted to abandon that, those 13 acres.
It just makes it official to have nothing on paper that says that a future road could be built in the area. And so again, I was talking about the layers of protection for natural areas, and where we opportunistically find those additional layers of protection through reduction of habitat fragmentation, adding properties to the adjacent ownership that we have, whether we would acquire lands adjacent to our properties, whether we would add buffers. In this case, I would say that we would be adding that buffer of land to our properties, whether we put conservation easements over properties. Any of those additional layers of protection, where we opportunistically find them in the county, we do bring those forward to you for a vote to ensure that we're putting every layer of protection possible on every natural area that we have in the county, so we can ensure that the investment the county's made, both in the acquisition and management of 32,000 acres in the county, that we, looking into the.
Is the Pinelands 32,000 acres?
No, entirely. Like the 32,000 acres of the, all the natural areas in all of Palm Beach County.
I understand that. But how many acres is that, that we want, that is adjacent to the, to the paper roadway? The barrier?
The Pine Glades natural area.
Approximately, Deb, it's all right.
I don't want to throw out a number and not have it. I don't.
That's okay, that's all right. I just want to be sure that what, that the benefit to the county is.
Pretty significant area.
It is a significant area. And that, and the barrier that has been up to now is, has been a barrier, as far as I can see. So I don't see any benefit to the, to the county, but maybe I'll learn more as we go through this hearing. Thank you very much. Oh, and the one other question, if you know. What benefit by the county abandoning these 13 acres would inure to the prospective buyer?
I'm not looking at those issues, I can't answer that.
I need to look at those issues.
So I can leave this until later, Mayor. I'll be fine.
Well, there's not gonna be a later, because we're, we're on it now. So the issue before us is a very clear redesignation of certain unused county property. It's not, it's not related to any comprehensive plan or other zoning application that may come before us that we have already had discussions on, that's been postponed and may come back before us. And so I understand that there is more going on here than what is being discussed, but I don't see where there is any cause for us to deny this motion based upon the facts that have been brought before us by staff. If you want to argue against the recommendation by staff, this is the appropriate time, and we should then decide whether we're gonna go forward with this, with this motion.
The reason that I wanted to get more information and pull it from the consent agenda, frankly, is that our zoning commission voted unanimously against it.
Commissioner.
No, please, let's not misstate the facts. This particular item has nothing to do with the zoning vote that had been discussed on another petition that has nothing to do with what's in front of us today.
This is not the abandonment of the 13 acres that surround the subject property?
That did not go to zoning. That was not the subject of the zoning. The zoning was on a completely separate item that is not before us today.
Okay.
So I'm just, I don't want you to.
I stand corrected. Thank you, Mayor. I thought that.
Misstate the facts.
That this was a, that this was the same issue that came before the zoning commission. But thank you for the information, Ms. Drum.
If I could let you know, Pine Glades natural area is 6,689 acres.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. I'm looking for, I have three lights on. I'm gonna turn off Commissioner Sacks', because she's been talking for a bit. Commissioner McKinley, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I just had a question for staff. Since Lisa raised it, you said that the road right-of-way predated the natural areas development. Just, just for the record, was the natural area purchased with the proceeds from what's often referred to as the Ad Reserve Bond?
I would have to check this exact source of those funds. And it was purchased between 1993 and 2019. There were a lot of different acquisitions as part of that, and I would have to check into the sources of the funding for all of those.
Okay. I think some of the funding sources were that environmentally sensitive lands bond that was issued. Just wanted to show that we did purchase lands outside of the Ad Reserve on that one. And Deb, I really think that this is a great idea, and I appreciate you taking the opportunity to creatively do this. I know that oftentimes, the residents in my district get a great sense of relief when a road is taken off of any kind of plan, and so I appreciate you giving our environmental community peace of mind on this one. Thank you for that.
We will continue to do that for all of our areas.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And again, I think it's important that we don't blur the issues and we're, stay focused on what is before us. Commissioner Moreno, did you want to speak on it, or are you ready to?
I'm ready to.
Call the vote?
I'm ready to call the vote.
Okay. So we, then, right now, the only thing before us is a motion to approve the redesignation of certain unused vacant county-owned land, as described in Amendment Two, from the road right-of-way to natural area lands and incorporation of those lands into the adjacent Pine Glades natural area. All in favor? All opposed?
Three to vote.
Okay. Seven to zero. It is approved. Thank you, Ms. Drum. Appreciate all of your clarifications. That ends the consent agenda. All right, we're gonna move on now to large-scale land use amendments, and that's item six. All right. We're going to move on now to large-scale land use amendments, and that's Item 6. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Item number 6, LGA 202011, is the Fountain MUPD Large-Scale Land Use Amendment. And the request before the board includes a change of the future land use from commercial high with an underlying eight to commercial high with an underlying 12 units per acre on 3.5 acres of land, and from utilities, transportation to high residential 12 on 24.16 acres of land. The staff report has 45 pages, and there are conditions associated with the proposed land use amendment. And we'll turn it over to the applicant, and then, if desired, a staff presentation.
Thank you, Wendy. For the record, my name is Josh Nichols with Schmidt Nichols, and we're representing AHS, who is the applicant. I'd just like to introduce also with me today, I have representation from Sterns Weaver, who is the environmental consultant. This is hopefully coming before you in August. And in September will be the Brownfield discussion and vote on that to clean up the site, as well as we have our, our partner, who's the current owner, Kirk Blown, who's the town manager for the Town of Palm Beach. So, they remain as ownership, and he's here just if you have any questions on that side of it. So, with that, I'll move forward. This is the Fountain MUPD. And here's the zoning request. And again, this, you've seen this once before through the transmittal, so I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. We've received positive feedback on October 15th for our Planning Commission hearing, which was a unanimous vote of approval. Then again, in November of 2021 with the BCC transmittal. And most recently, May 5th with unanimous zoning commission approval. And again, with that, Wendy had mentioned the rezoning. We have TDRs. We have workforce housing bonus, as well as our companion large-scale comp plan amendments, which I'll go into those maps. So, here's the site location. As you can see, to our west is the Tesla dealer that most of us know about, the Caterpillar dealer to the east, which takes up basically from Okeechobee to Elmhurst, which is most of our eastern property line. And it's surrounded by, on the east side of the canal, we're surrounded by townhomes. There's some mobile homes to the south and some condos, as well as some rentals. To the east across the canal, or sorry, to the west across the canal, we do have some single-family residential and some commercial, as I mentioned, sprinkled in there. So, just some of the property history. So, historically, this was, has been owned and operated by the Town of Palm Beach, or, yep, Town of Palm Beach, as a yard and construction municipal waste yard. Also, the Police Bellevanin Association operated there, and they had a gun range. So, it's been, had kind of a, an interesting past. In 1980, the BCC also approved a special exception to allow service and accessory structures, including the recreation and club facility on the site. This is the, kind of a quick look at the existing future land use designation. So, commercial high with underlying eight along the three and a half acres that fronts Okeechobee. And utilities and transportation was issued to the site for the 24 acres south. As you can see, again, bringing in all the land uses around it. Commercial high with underlying eight is most of the frontage areas along Okeechobee. High residential 18, which is, you can't actually ask for that anymore, but it is a kind of an antiquated land use designation at this point. HR 12 abuts us to the, the east. We've got HR 8 to our west as well. And you see those start to fill in. And then, you've got medium residential, five units an acre to the south and to the west of the canal. And we would be proposing to change to commercial high with the underlying 12, as well as the HR 12 for the balance for the residential component. Existing zoning goes from RH over the whole thing to MUPD to support the balance of the uses. To kind of go through some of the density, so, the maximum allowable commercial development on this would be at a .5 FAR, or 76,000 square feet. We're proposing at about .14, or 21,000 square feet. So, proposed commercial is only 28% of the permissible intensity. Then we move to the residential side. Again, this is 708 units. We have total workforce units of 177, so we're bringing 177 units onto, online for workforce, and they will be built onsite and be intermixed into the development and match exactly what a market rate unit would be. Those TDRs were purchased, and we're doing a voluntary condition that, for 25%, which gets us to that 177. I'll go through this fairly quickly on the, the environmental cleanup, but, and we do have our environmental attorney, if you have any questions specific. But basically, the Town of Palm Beach entered into 50-year lease agreement with our client. And through that process, through the due diligence, it was addressed that there was environmental conditions that had existed for over 80 years. The household solid waste for 40 years, yard trash disposal, and the firearms range for the past several decades. That remedial action is, we thought, at a point, about 10, plus, minus 10 million. We think it's closer to 20 million now, because they found some additional cleanup needed. So, you know, a project of this size is needed to, to, to be able to fund those efforts to clean up. But again, we have a good partner in the Town of Palm Beach, and they're helping to, to move this. And that's why you're also going to see the Brownfield designation, so, to help recoup some of those tax credits for the cleanup. Here's the site plan rendering. Again, I won't go through this too much, but it basically, your north is to your right, and you're seeing the commercial up front, the first set of residential buildings. There's a parking garage between those two buildings to the north. And then, as we head south of Elmhurst, we actually have a planning, a voluntary planning condition that the structures south of Elmhurst shall be limited to three stories, because that's where we start to get into more of the townhouse and some of the single-family to the south. So, we, we've adhered to that in our plan. As you can see from this image, the western third of the property is where most of the vegetative and trash debris was, so we are leaving that open. That will be brought down, because right now, those piles are about 25 feet tall. That'll be brought down and capped, so that way, we can use those as recreation, and they will meet all the health requirements to allow that recreation area. Again, just another kind of view, north is, is to the bottom there. Okeechobee, you can see. Here's the site plan. Really, this is just to show all the green spaces that we provided. So, we've been able to do, we're required four and a quarter acres of recreational space, and we're at about four and a half acres. So, again, want to make sure that we have plenty of recreation for the number of units. Also, just a quick glimpse at the separation that we're showing. So, about 230 feet to the west side of the canal, and then, you can see the other buildings are around 300 to 400 feet separation. These are just some of the pretty pictures of kind of the clubhouse pool area. There is two full clubhouses, two full pools that will be installed. Just another architectural rendering. This I'll go, I'll go through quick. Really, I think one of the things that, that we took from the, the comprehensive plan was some of the objectives of affordable housing. And that Palm Beach County shall encourage and support sustainable urban development, including restoration, infill, and adaptive reuse. So, I can't think of a better location that has public transit, has housing, has housing opportunities here, work, working opportunities. So, it really fits all of those. And the last bullet on there was the green, that the county requires at least one of those items to, to change to HR 12, and this project has three of the four. So, I think that was something to point out. Public outreach. Again, you can kind of see some of those dates. We've been working with a gentleman, Larry Diggert, who you'll, you'll hear from. I think he's had some concerns about the landfill and the closure and some taxes. One thing I would, I just want to tell you about the taxes is that, obviously, it will be owned and maintained by Town of Palm Beach, but the taxes for the improvement value. So, those, that vertical construction does have an ad valorem tax implication to our client who's, who's going to be building. So, this isn't a tax-free property. This, this will be taxed along with the, the sales tax from the rental. So, it will be going on the tax books. And finally, just voluntary conditions, just wanted to show those. Again, 25% of the total units will be workforce, limitation to the 708, and structures south of Elmhurst will be limited to three-story. Again, staff is, is in agreement with the proposal and recommending approval. We're in agreement with the conditions of approval, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Okay. Just as, to refresh everybody's recollection, BCC transmitted this by a six-to-oh vote back on November 3rd, 2021. This is going to be concurrent with Item 7. I don't believe we have to do our disclosures until we get to Item 7. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think for all intents and purposes, it's being handled as a joint item. So, you can do it now, or you can do it when you get to the discussion on zoning.
All right. I'm going to do a sec, two votes on it, so we'll, we'll go and pick up seven in a minute. All right. So, I'm going to, I, I have one card here. Why don't we go ahead and hear public comment, and then, we can decide if we have any further discussion on this.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Larry, is there Larry here? Oh, I think Larry was, what's that?
Diggert.
Diggert. And I think we, you were here last time.
Just me.
All right.
I thank you all, Mayor and county commissioners. Basically, Town of Palm Beach, you know, things are going to go on, and I can't do anything. But when I fought this, the dump site was contaminated, and they kept telling me, no. Well, now, we all know it is. And the other thing is, is, could you please do a follow-up? Because the one that's out at Skies Road is just contaminated, as is this land that's here. So, it's right along the turnpike off of Skies Road. So, if I don't get anything out of this, but them not dumping out there and contaminating more land, it would just be a blessing. So, there again, I know this is going to be built. I think Josh, he's been great, answered everything that, you know. So, basically, it's going to go on. It's going to happen. But the Town of Palm Beach, main thing is, I want to know that taxes are going to be paid on these buildings, because if I don't pay my taxes, they take my house. They're going to build 700 and some homes and not pay any taxes. I know they don't have to pay it on the land, which I don't think that's fair, but whatever. But if they don't pay taxes on this building, all these buildings, it's really sad that the county is not getting money. So, I'm hoping it's not going to be just a little bit of taxes for that big a building. So, I know what I pay on my little thousand-square-foot house. I sure hope there's a lot of tax money going back into Palm Beach County. I've lived here for 60 years. Thank God that we are saving some more natural land, because pretty soon, there ain't going to be anymore. So, I would like to preserve things, and please, follow up on checking into the dump site on Skies Road and make them do like solid waste authorities and put liners down and do the right thing. But there again, I'm glad that it finally came out that the land is contaminated on them nine-point-something acres that's been running into our canal, out to our intercoastal and into our ocean. So, they've got away with it since 1920. So, 102 years they've been doing this. And everything that Town of Palm Beach gets is from our side. They have no water. They have no, everything has to come from our side to feed them. So, without the little Palm Beach County people, Town of Palm Beach wouldn't have anything over there. So, thank you very much, but please, check on the dump site, and I'll be following through on how they clean this up. And if I got to come back again, I will. But I'll be here, and I thank you all very much for hearing me. But please, check on the other dump site at Skies Road, because it's contaminated just as bad as this place was. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rutter, would you please make a note of that, and we'll follow up on that. Commissioner Kerner, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am interested in knowing how the, or what the effect is of the fee interest being held by the Town of Palm Beach, but it being leased to, I guess, the developers. What's the impact on ad valorem taxes?
Josh can discuss that. They have to pay taxes on the land value improvements. And he could explain a bit more than that, because he's investigated that.
Yeah, we, we don't know the exact figure that it will be, because it does have to go through an appraisal once it's, it's fully constructed. And as those COs occur, then they'll have to do those appraisals at that time and then do... But it's usually an 80% of that appraised value, and then, that would be an ad valorem tax.
Well, let me ask the question a different way. What taxes aren't being paid as a result of this?
Just be the land, the actual land value.
How, how can we estimate what the potential loss in ad valorem will be because of the ownership structure?
Well, it's currently owned by the Town of Palm Beach, so there's no, there's really, there's no land taxes now currently.
Sure, but I think the land may, may increase in value based upon some of the actions of the board. And with that comes a high-intensity development with services that need to be provided, I presume, by the county government, if it's in the county's jurisdiction. So, it seems like there's some opportunity cost here to the taxpayer because of the way the deal is structured. So, I think it's important for me to know what, what opportunity cost there is as a result of the ownership structure.
Understand. And so, I mean, we, so we do have to pay the impact fees. We do have to pay the, and then, like I said, the improvement value. But I'm not sure what that opportunity cost would be on the taxes. I see what you're saying. But, because again, it's, it's, right now, there's no taxes being generated from anything on the site. And now, we would be bringing the, the sales tax and the improvement tax to the table.
And I appreciate that, but there's been very little need, aside from the environmental concerns, for government services on that parcel. But when you put a, a density at this level, there's going to be services required by, by the county government. And I know that this is not a unique structure. I know that the county's participated. I think with our hotel and other items where we hold the interest in the land, and private entities go on and develop on it. But, you know, I, I think it's important that we anticipate or, or seek to recoup some of those costs, if necessary. We've talked about this concept with the University of Florida project as well, and other items where there's development, whether it's private, well, it has to be private, where there's services required and, and taxes aren't being paid on the land. I think there's even a term for, it's like municipal credit, I don't know what it's called, but where the government pays for services that aren't being taxed, basically. So, I'm looking at the Town of Palm Beach to maybe have some answers on that as well.
Commissioner, I think, if you'll allow me, I think this is a little different than the UF, because everything vertical is going to be taxed. They, they will be, by virtue of the ad valorem tax, be paying their share of the cost of the additional use. And I think the additional value of the property is based upon what's gone vertical. And I think that we will be capturing that money through the ad valorem taxes. So, there is a slight difference between this and UF, where all of the, of the improvements there will be escaping taxation. And there's certainly a strong argument for trying to make sure that they're going to play, pay for the police and fire and, and other, you know, impacts on, on the city. So...
And I certainly appreciate that, and I agree with your perspective. But again, my questions were just designed to find out what that opportunity cost is. What are we missing out on as a result? And maybe it's insignificant, and, but maybe it's not, so...
And I would also add that we, we do also have that plus or minus $20 million to clean up the site. So, hopefully, that's a, it's a community benefit, too. So, we're trying to clean up the site, and that comes at a great cost to both.
Which is a great thing, by the way, sort of a silver lining in what I think is an otherwise great project. But that the property owner is probably some, to some degree, responsible for, for the underlying pollution that occurred on the site.
Understood.
And so, again, I'm not trying to tax the developer here. You guys are paying your fair share. I'm just wondering what the Town of Palm Beach's role is in this in terms of making sure that we're, we're made whole as, as a government. And again, maybe it's, it's not a significant amount, but I would think that the land use change on this property has boosted the value exponentially from what it's worth now. And it seems like it's the Town of Palm Beach that is, and I'm not trying to pick on the Town of Palm Beach, but it seems like they're the ones that are raping the benefits of this structured deal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further comments from the board? Did you want to clarify and/or...
Yes, the best, best...
Do identify yourself with the record, please.
Yes, Kirk Blown, town manager for the Town of Palm Beach.
Thank you.
So, the, I'm not exact on all the details of the history there, but we've operated it, made different functions. The town has owned that land for a very long time. Most recently, it was operated as a vegetative landfill. That permit is still open. It's, it is regulated by the state. We do comply with all the, all the rules. We hire Kibbley Horn to coordinate the soil testing. It's all within the limits that the FDEP in the county allows. It's still open as a permit for a landfill. This deal sort of came together. I do believe it is a win-win for all, all sides. Of course, the Town of Palm Beach has something to benefit from it. But the, as we were putting together, the... But the, as we were putting together, the, the terms, the financial terms of the deal, the, the big question was if the, the use of the land is converted to something more usable, what the contaminants may be. So AHS did take on those, the further testing. We're not required to do any cleanup at the time, as a landfill was within the, the limits. If we convert it to residential use, again, I'm not an expert in these things, that's why we hired the engineers to oversee this process, we do need to clean up the land. So I, I think there is a, a win there for the, for everyone, that that land get cleaned up. But in order for that land to get cleaned up, the, the financial terms of the deal wouldn't be feasible unless we can achieve a brownfield designation, because the cleanup is quite expensive, almost the full appra, maybe even more than the appraised value of the land. So that cleanup would, would be completed. You know, the workforce housing is very appealing, I think, particularly what's going on at the moment. We have close to 400 employees in the Town of Palm Beach. This is an ongoing discussion with our staff. What are we going to do? We do have people that routinely turn down jobs to work for the town now because of the concern of the affordability of housing in Palm Beach County. So we believe the, the structure of the, you know, we went back for several years, back and forth in trying to make this work. And what I learned was, as I read, every deal has like 10 lives. And this, this thing fell apart a million times. And if we were to go back out, I don't know if we could find a, a partner. This, this seems to make sense, at least in our opinion. We don't really see much of a downside, but I think the, the terms need to be as is, otherwise we'll continue to use it as, as an open permit, as a vegetative landfill, and still do the expensive, we spend hundreds of dollars a year to do the testing and meet with all the officials to make sure it's in compliance of all laws.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm going to ask you to fill out a card before you sit down.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You're very welcome, Commissioner. All right. I'm going to look for a motion to adopt the ordinance for the found MUPD amendment.
I make a motion to-
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard and I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Sacks, you want to be recognized?
No, I just got a second.
Oh, okay. I got my second on my right. Okay. All in favor, all opposed. Show that as approved, seven to zero. All right, we're going to move on to item seven. And as I said, this is a companion item. We're going to go ahead and do our disclosures at this point. I'm going to go from right to left, just to mix it up a little bit. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Commissioner Marino?
None.
Vice Mayor?
I had verbal communications with Josh Nichols, Bobby Levin, Les Revkin. My staff had verbal communications with Larry Dykert and Donald Foster. I have received correspondence and I did not have a site visit.
Wow, I feel ignored. Okay. Commissioner Kerner? None for Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Ms. Verr.
Commissioner Marino? Sacks, wow.
None, and I had none too.
I see you on-
I had none. Mr. Bob.
I've said, no more two Marias at the same table.
You're lucky to have two Marias. Might have three when-
And, and I have no disclosures. Okay. I'm going to call the vote. All, oh, we have, what do we have? Another one?
Just one card by Larry.
Okay.
On seven as well.
All right. Larry, did you want to come back up and make any remarks with on six and seven?
This way, I mean-
No, don't say anything until you find your way to the microphone.
I just, like I say, I just like everything to be checked out. I mean, y'all are going to vote and approve, but I mean, does that just mean nothing can be done or is everything going to be checked in? And you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's a lot of taxes that would be coming to Palm Beach County that's not getting paid in the Town of Palm Beach. I know what each residents pay for their yard removal, so I've got all that in paperwork. So I know what they pay and they only pay very little for a permit to dump. So I have all that on record too. So it proves in the pudding if you, if you do the stuff. Thank you.
You're very welcome and thank you so much for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven, A7. There are five motions.
Okay. I have Commissioner Bernard's motion to approve. I have the Vice Mayor's to second. All in favor, all opposed. Show that as being approved, seven to zero. Thank you, everybody. All right. We're going to move on now to items. Let's see, we have no small scale, no large scale, no previously, no zoning, no. All right, so we're up to item eight.
Eleven.
Postponed.
Eight, nine, and 10 were postponed, so that'll bring you to page 12 of the agenda, item number 11.
Why, thank you. All right, time for Forest Oaks Community Development District, the CDD. I'm sure there'll be no discussion on that. All right, staff, why don't you make a presentation or do you want to let the petitioner do this first?
I believe the petitioner is the one who would go first and then we'll follow.
Okay, very good. All right. Mayor, it's always good to see you.
Former Mayor, yeah, thank you. Todd Wadraska. This is, Community Development District is the topic of the day and I was actually hired by the developer to ask to form what's called the Forest Oaks Community Development District. So I will be very brief. So the, the biggest takeaway from the Forest Oaks Community Development District is that it will, it will only affect future residents of the community. It won't impact anybody that's currently living there or anybody in the county, for that matter. So the CDD, Community Development District, it's formed under chapter 190 of the Florida statutes. Since this is an unincorporated Palm Beach County, the county commission would be the approving entity. There's been a few different CDDs formed in the county, but mostly in municipalities lately, like Avenir and Palm Beach Gardens. Banyan Cay and the city of West Palm Beach are the two most recent examples. So the way this would work is the, the CDD would be formed only around the undeveloped tracts currently. Like I said, it won't impact any, any current residents, only future residents. And this is a method to pay for public infrastructure. In this instance, it's going to, going to mostly pay for the drainage associated with the development. And then, and then ultimately, the homeowners that live there would be paying off the CDD bond that would be issued over the land that gets developed and it's an improvement bond or called a dirt bond. And the collateral is the dirt that gets improved. So there are, the benefits is that this is, the benefits to the homeowners and so forth is this is a way to have some flexibility on home prices, initial home prices, by financing infrastructure over the long haul. In this petition, there's 11 workforce housing units out of the 373 dwelling units that are planned. And the workforce housing units would not be assessed any debt. Those would be paid off at closings. The, the CDD typically issues bonds of about 30 years. That's the typical lifespan of the bond issuance, but the CDD actually would stay in existence until, until either some entity took it over or the county commission would sunset it. And the philosophy behind these districts is that growth pays for itself. So with that, I'll, I'll kind of keep my presentation short. We do have a staff recommendation and the applicant is, is fine with all of the conditions set forth. So here to answer any questions or, or, you know, try to educate anybody if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wadroska. And before I call on Commissioner Kerner, just to clarify, this is really an, an opportunity to reduce the, the cost to the purchasers and hopefully make these units more affordable and then spreading the cost of the, the development over 30 years? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Right. Financing infrastructure to give flexibility on the initial home price.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you. And thank you, Todd, for your service as Mayor of Jupiter for a long time. I know that it was both fulfilling and very challenging position.
I don't think he had gray hair when he started.
It's coming back though. With regards to the CDD, when we met on Zoom the other day, you had published during that presentation what each unit would be assessed over that 30, presumably it would terminate after 30 years, but I'm not sure if that's a self-executing provision here. But what, what, can you tell us what the, the amounts assessed per year were for each type of unit?
Sure. So the, the highest assessment for the single-family homes was $1,400 for the debt assessment. And then for the lower, for the smaller units, it went down, I believe, it went down $1,200 for the largest town home and $850 for the smallest town home.
Okay. And do we know at what, is there any interest assessed as part of this amateurization schedule?
Well, sure. So it's a, it's a 30-year bond. So it, it acts similar to, to a mortgage, if you will. So sure that there's principal and interest as part of the assessment. So that's, it's, that's all blended into the assessment. And the, the, under the program that we were showing on the, on the Zoom, it was, it was projecting an interest rate of, of four and a half percent.
Okay.
Interest.
And so walk me through conceptually how this, I guess, what's the alternative? Because you made a statement that it will reduce the purchase price of the home.
Right.
And I can understand theoretically-
Sure.
-how that's possible, but we're still taking an amount of debt that needs to be paid and extending it over 30 years. Whether that was part of the mortgage or part of a CDD bond, the concept's the same. So what's the alternative to the developer if this doesn't occur? And then also, follow-up to that, I'm sorry to pepper you, but what are the distinctions between the, the purchase price without the CDD and with it?
Right. So if, so the alternative is, this is a CDD, if you don't approve a CDD, the only thing that you're assuring is a higher purchase price to whoever buys the first homes. That's the only, that's the only thing that's for sure, if you don't approve the CDD.
Because you're deferring debt, basically.
Right. Well, it's, you're not going to have the ability, the developer won't have the ability to finance the infrastructure. They're going to have to just bake it into the initial cost of the home.
So there's no other ways of finance the infrastructure that's required as a result of this zoning decision to add density, or it's not increasing density, it was there already, I believe. But the developer, we don't deal with CDDs too often. I don't think they're very popular in the unincorporated parts of the county because possibly some things that have gone on before we got here as a current board. But what are, what's the other alternative? Why can't the developer front the costs of the infrastructure that they're, I don't want to say causing the need for, but they're developing the land?
Well, well, they, they can and they will, but they would, they would simply just pass that cost on, the, the higher costs, they would pass those on to the end home builder, the first initial purchase.
But what's the instrument that they're utilizing to get the monies to finance the infrastructure?
Right. So the CDD is issuing a bond that is, that by our calculations, it's giving the developer the opportunity to lower the initial cost of the home by about between $15,000 and $16,000 per dwelling unit.
And why can't they do that without the CDD?
They, I mean, they, they simply, I mean, it's just, it's just a financing capital stack. They, I mean, they won't have, I can't really describe, I'm not sure I understand the question. They, the entire financing program is kind of built around, if they have the CDD, they would be able to lower the costs because they'd be deferring the, this infrastructure over the long term. Otherwise, they're going to have to, you know, kind of pay that out of pocket. I mean, I don't know. I don't have, I don't have a great answer for why it would change, but-
And I'm not sure that I see the reason why it would change. On one hand, if the CDD is passed, the developer goes and gets a 30-year bond, they get the principal money early or right away and then they build out the infrastructure. If they don't get the CDD bond, then they have to come up with money to build that, that infrastructure anyways. So I'm not, I'm not clear.
Commissioner Kerner? I mean, unless I'm not understanding this whole mechanism, it seems to me that this is just a way of, of pushing the expenses out 30 years, so you're not bearing them today when you're closing on your home, that you have an obligation that's going to run with the land for the bond to repay it. But that obligation, like a mortgage, is pushed out so that just as if I was buying a $500,000 home, if I don't have $500,000, I can't buy the home. But if I have $100,000 and I can get a $400,000 mortgage, I'm still obligated to pay that $400,000, but I can push it over the, the next 30 years. So I, I think the same number is in front of us. The same cost of development is there, it's just a question of whether we're going to make the buyer pay it at closing or whether we're going to let the buyer defer part of that payment and push it out over a 30-year period. And if they sell their home, the next person would then be obligated to have to continue paying that bond over the 30-year period. I think, Mr. Wadroska, am I understanding that correctly?
Exactly, that's exactly right.
And, and I understand the concept here. What I don't understand, with all due respect, Mayor, is that we're asking for government intervention to create another level of government through a, a district to, to pass on these financing, well, these infrastructure charges. Let's say on one unit, it's $15,000, right? We have the CDD, over 30 years, you pay your $15,000, I'm making the number up, through the CDD with interest. Or you get a mortgage and, oh, it's $42,000 over-
That's how much do you pay?
Okay. So it's, let's say that $42,000 is paid or financed by the CDD or it's paid and financed by a mortgage that someone takes out on their home. I'm not seeing what the value is or what the government's interest is in creating a, a unit of government to handle this issue. I, I just don't, I'm not clear on, on why the government should be involved in this and what value it brings to the homeowner, the surrounding property owners. I understand that there is a suggestion that the, the cost of acquisition of the home would be lower. I've not been presented with anything to substantiate that. Your word is, is a very strong word and I take you at your word, but I'm just not clear on what that nexus is for the government to be involved in this transaction. So I'll try to figure that out as we go along.
Mr. Wadroska, do you have anybody who could make a presentation as to the financial impact of the CDD on a potential buyer?
Right. I mean, if there, anybody from the, I'm not sure if the, oh, Tony, you want to, you want to, you want to give it a shot? Right. And there, there's no question that the CDD is a finan, a financing mechanism that is, it's widely used in the state and it's hard to describe. I'll try to let the developer kind of explain the pricing mechanisms.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Yeah. Tony Palumbo with Madamie Holmes.
Okay. And after you're done testifying, please fill out a card.
Yes, sir. So the question?
Okay. So the question that Commissioner Kerner, I think, has on the table is why should we do this? What is the impact? Why should we put another level of government in here versus just allowing the, the normal course of events where someone will buy and those improvements are incorporated into the original purchase price of the home?
Okay. I'm going to apologize in advance for my simplistic approach to this, because some of the experts that would have shared this information are not here today. Ken Delatory, his daughter is graduating middle school, so he asked for a hall pass. So, so if we view the infrastructure cost of, or burden on the home as approximately $15,000, I think that what's in the documents shares the maximum burden. So if it was $15,000, that $15,000, if we financed it as part of the house, would represent about a $30,000 increase in the sales price of the home. So that's, when we talk about the economics of it, that's where the advantage comes in to the home buyer and also to us, because we're able to reduce our costs. Number two, what it does specifically for this community is, this community, Forest Oaks, and I'm not sure what we're calling it, because I have three or four marketing names that have been floated by us. This community has a obligation or drainage obligation for the surrounding neighbors. By having the CDD have oversight from it, the, the master association board is interacting directly with a tax-funded entity that will cover the drainage costs, manage the drainage costs for that water flow that will go into Lake Worth Drainage District. And I know there's a third one and Todd probably- And I know there's a third one, and Todd probably can, in the event of disaster relief, there's some advantages to having a CDD associated with the property, and I'll probably defer back to Todd on that one. But if there's other questions that I might be able to answer a little better, I'll do my best.
What is our guarantee that this is going to inure to the benefit of the purchasers and not just to you?
Only the fact that I, that I look for a return on my investment at a specific number and that we are looking to bring our home prices down. We have interest rates creeping up a little bit right now in the marketplace. I think they've moved two points. Also, we have targeted this neighborhood and the size of the homes to be a little bit more affordable in Palm Beach County. You know.
Commissioner? Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the, the one question that comes to mind now is, what, what's the alternative if this isn't passed? Are you suggesting that the drainage obligations won't be complied with?
No, no, I can answer that. So instead of dealing with the, and I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize.
No, go ahead, please.
Usually, they keep me in the back of the room, so I apologize for being asked to stand here today. Thank goodness, I lost a little weight and I have a jacket that fits. So what would, what would happen is, I would still, I basically borrow money from Madamie Homes to do our projects. So the financing that we would then be seeking through the tax bonds would equate to about a thirty thousand dollar increase average across all our homes. And it may have moved a little bit, but I'm kind of using the round numbers that I remember when we first put this together. Secondly, the question you asked me was how the drainage would be handled. Instead of dealing with the government agency, they would be just dealing with another HOA board. So we would have a master association that would have the obligation, and they would, instead of collecting the money for the operations and maintenance of the drainage and looking out after it over the long term, what would, what would then happen is they would be dealing directly with just another board or one, one board that would be one-ninth of the voting group to the, to the master. What this, what this does is, all the funds that are required for the drainage and management of the drainage are collected through the tax bills as opposed through the, the HOA fees. And, and I, and I'm trying to be as succinct as I can.
Commissioner Kerner, how you doing there?
Good, thank you. No further questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to take Commissioner Bernard now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just, my, it's not really questions, but just, usually I typically would wait for, to hear the comments from the residents on this item, but I know for me, like, I'm not supporting creating a CDD, and there's nothing that guarantees that the residents who purchase a new home will get a lower price. And I don't believe that the new residents should pay for the drainage obligations for the whole unit, so I am totally against creating a CDD.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your comments. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Todd, can you still hear? Thank you. The previous speaker said the cost savings is about thirty thousand dollars on the upfront cost of the home. You said about fifteen to sixteen thousand. That's quite a disparity, so can you, can you tell me which one it is?
So on the, the analysis that I performed, that I shared with, shared with everybody that we met with on Zoom, was that the CDD bond under the, under the assessment program that's in the petition would translate into about between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars of, of infrastructure costs. And the CDD, it, it's a financing mechanism, right? It's the ability, it, it gives the developer the ability to finance infrastructure over thirty years. It can only, it can only deal with infrastructure. And, and in this case, we're talking roads, drainage, landscape buffers, and in this petition, it can't deal with anything that's off-site, because we, the county's had some issues with off-site. So in the, in the provisions that staff wanted, they said they don't want any off-site improvements. So this is, this is really just a tool to give the flexibility for financing, but there are, there are no guarantees, like, there, there is nothing guaranteed that it translates into lower costs, but it gives the flexibility of lower costs. That's why I said, the only sure thing that happens if you don't approve it is higher costs.
Okay. So it would be a fifteen thousand dollar approximate savings upfront or a forty-two thousand dollar cost over thirty years for the largest unit? So we're either going to charge the homeowner on the largest unit fourteen hundred dollars a month, I mean, fourteen hundred dollars a year for thirty years for a total of forty-two thousand dollars, or they can pay fifteen thousand dollars more for the home upfront?
Right. But, I mean, that's, that's, that's the debate that you have with the mortgage, right? So you, you either, you either pay what you can upfront with a mortgage, or you finance it for, over the longest period of time as you can. So this is just putting a mortgage on the infrastructure, if you will.
And are the.
Or allowing for it.
Are these assessments ad valorem or are they non-ad valorem?
These are all non-ad valorem assess, assessments.
Right. So they're not deductible on a person's property or on their income tax returns, because it's not, only ad valorem assessments are deductible, so there's no tax benefit to the homeowner for that. The special dis, it is a created, it is a special district under Florida statute. Are the members of the board of the special district, how are they selected?
So in a CDD, they are initially elected by the landowner and then, which is basically the developer. And then, over the period of six years, as long as people move into the community, as long as two hundred and fifty people move into the community, they're qualified electors, there starts a conversion process where they actually wind up on a ballot, and it gets, they get elected through, via general election, just on a ballot, just like you folks.
Okay. And would that elected body have the ability to issue more bonds over the duration of their existence?
Yes.
So the homeowner could start out at fourteen hundred dollars a month when they buy the house, and at some point, that could increase significantly if the CDD voted in to, to issue more bonds?
Well, I would view that as a, as a potential positive. So for instance, if they had a major erosion issue, or if they had something that was, erosion is the biggest ticket item with CDDs, where you see sloughing or you see some sort of major improvement that needs to take place. So the CDD is, is in place so that you can assess residents their fair share via a bond or a borrowing of some kind to, to assess them. But this would be, this would be their choice. I mean, it's the residents that are benefiting from it. It's only the people that are benefiting from the improvements paying for it.
Okay. And given the legislature's recent love for special districts, what would happen if legislation was passed to eliminate the district? Well, who be, who then takes over acquisition of the bonds and maintenance of the infrastructure?
Well, just like the state of Florida, who, who formed the district that you're referring to, you're the body that formed, that would form this district in theory, and you would have the ability to eliminate it if you chose. But just like in Disney or Reedy Creek, somebody would need to take over the responsibility of the payments and the, and the debt. And, but what, what typically happens in these is, a developer, you know, builds the homes, puts the assessment program in place, and then everybody just pays their assessment as they go along. The, the biggest trick, the biggest trick in this case, if the district went away, is who would take over the ownership and maintenance of the assets? So the two choices would be some sort of HOA or POA, or the county in this case, if they, if they were, if they were willing to.
The statute reads that if a special district is eliminated, the maintenance, the operation, and the debt service on any outstanding debt then becomes a responsibility of the local government in which the district resides. So it would become the responsibility of the county taxpayers to pay back those bonds and then operate and maintain that infrastructure. That's, that's the statute. So I've never been a fan of community development districts. I don't think that's any surprise, so thank you for allowing me to ask some questions.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Mr. Wadroska, help me with this a little bit. Commissioner McKinley, obviously, is pointing to Reedy Creek and the discussion about where all that debt is going to wind up at some point. What is in this that guarantees that this county does not find itself the obligor at some point? Does the HOA, if there is going to be an HOA, become the obligor? How do we ensure that if we allow the developer this opportunity to defer a portion of the, you know, construction cost out thirty years, notwithstanding the fact, as Commissioner McKinley points out, that increases the cost like a mortgage? But how do we make sure that we are not saddling our future residents with the responsibilities of these residents?
So I, I disagree with what Commissioner McKinley was saying, that it wind, that the debt would wind up becoming an obligation of the county in any form. This is, this would be an independent special district, and I can, I can explain what happened in two thousand and nine and ten. We, there was, there was several CDDs across the state that didn't pay their bonds. And what happened was, so a typical example would have been, development started, the recession hit, and every, all the developments stopped, and all of a sudden, the payment of the bonds, you know, didn't, you know, ceased to happen. The, the people, the, the ones that really got, lost the most amount of money were the, the people who, the lenders, the bond, the people who sold the bonds or, or bought the bonds in this case.
Todd, I don't want to cut you off, but I think the question is, how do I make sure that I'm not saddling the future residents with the obligations of these people who are purchasing these homes in this property?
And it's an independent special district under the, under the state statute. I, I, I hate to disagree with a, a commissioner, but.
That's what the bill analysis said. That's what the bill analysis said on the Reedy Creek legislation that also affected eight other special districts across the state of Florida and multiple counties. And that's what the staff analysis said, referring back to Florida statute, that when a special district is dissolved, the responsibilities fall into the hands of the local government. That's, that's what the statute says. And the bill analysis said it, and that's what was signed into law.
Right. The collateral, the collateral for the debt is the land that's being improved.
I'm, I'm going to suggest, Todd, that we might want to defer this until we have a clearer picture of what the potential contingent liabilities are and what the developer's going to do to ensure that they don't find themselves at the county level. And to do something, and again, I have no problem with this as a vehicle for reducing the initial cost of purchase so that people can afford to move into these homes. What I do have an objection to is to have a potential liability for people who don't live there if something goes south on the CDD. So I think we need to have a clearer picture of exactly what's going to happen if, if this thing dissolves.
Okay.
And make, making sure that the only people who are going to be on the hook are the people that are within the CDD.
Okay.
All right? And with that, I'm going to look for a motion to postpone for a month. Do I have a, a motion? Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I appreciate the, the concept of postponing this, but I'm not sure that, that's where I'm headed. We have all these people assembled here and.
I don't think we have a lot of them on, on this particular arm, do we?
Yeah.
We do, okay. All right, then, all right, let's take our, our, our comments. Now, it's, it's five to eleven. I'd like to take a break just for five minutes, give everybody a time to stretch their legs, then we'll take public comment, and then we'll make a decision whether we're going to rule on this today or whether we're going to postpone. But I think, Mr. Wadroska, you see the way this is heading.
Mr. Mayor, just for your information as our chair and mayor, I think we only have about four speaking cards. It looks like the, the thirty or so cards that I have otherwise are non-speaking.
All right. I'm going to still go ahead and take a five-minute break, just so everybody can stretch their legs, and we'll get back, let's say, five after eleven. Thank you.
It has always been determined, using that same logic, staff found that this also was the best option because it gives them an additional level of responsive government to come back and to seek redress if there's any issues with the services that they are receiving. It appears to be compatible and there is capacity within, that's condition five. And then the last factor is the area that will be served. The district is amenable. We have received from the petitioner that the area is served by the district is amenable. That is what they have given us in the documentation. They've provided an affidavit from the landowner and the authorized representative that we have gotten their consent. And they've provided a legal description that appears to match the 2014 deed that was the original conveyance for this property. The reason I'm bringing this up is you will hear from an adjacent HOA that will bring this issue up. We have found that what they gave us was sufficient and it meets the requirement. So we have found that it meets all six criteria. And then further, we have found that it meets all of the BCC directives. We've already talked about these at length. The petitioner has represented that they will meet and has no problem with those. Those are in the proposed ordinance if you choose to adopt it. And you've already talked about the affordability arrangement, I'm not going to go through it. So the staff determination and recommendation is that it has met the six statutory factors. It is consistent with the directives from 2003. And so there is a motion, recommendation, to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing the Forest Oaks Community Development District relative to those directives and the conditions. That will conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. And just to, again, reiterate, staff is recommending approval because from your vantage point, the six statutory factors have been met. You're not making any, you're not evaluating whether this is a good deal or a bad deal for purchasers of this, deferring and using the CDD as a financial opportunity to, again, take some of these expenses and pushing them into the future. You're only looking at those six factors and that's why you have approved it.
Exactly. We are looking at what the statute says we are to look at. You all have the discretion to take that into consideration.
A purchaser has to make the decision whether this is the right vehicle for them.
Yes.
Okay. Can you give us a little bit of a critique of the issues that have been raised by Commissioner McKinley as far as the contingent liabilities, as far as the county?
Certainly. So, I'd like to point out first, under the statute, section 190.016, per N15, it talks about the event of a default under the bonds. It says, "A default on the bonds or obligations of a district shall not constitute a debt or obligation of a local general-purpose government of the state." So initially, if the CDD defaults, the county is not liable for that debt. However, there is another provision that talks about the event of termination or dissolution of the district. And so that statute is 190.046, and per N2 says, "The district shall remain in existence unless, A, the district is merged with another district as provided in subsection three or subsection four." And those sections discuss merging with other CDDs in the area. And part B says, "All of the specific community development facilities and services have been transferred to a general-purpose unit of local government in the manner provided in subsection five, six, and seven." So what can happen is, the district could transfer its services that it's providing to the county. But this is something that the county has to approve. It's not something that automatically happens.
But in this case, there are no services, right? We're just talking about a financial obligation.
Well, the district is going to be providing water, drainage.
Okay, alright.
And so there'll be, obviously, there'll be continuing maintenance of those types of things. I'm not sure exactly what this district, other than the drainage, is going to be providing. I would imagine the applicant can discuss that. But it's so, in that event, what happens is, the county can enact a non-emergency ordinance to essentially create a transfer plan. And as part of that transfer plan, if the county elects to do this, they would have to assume the obligations of the CDD. So they would have to assume the debt obligations of the CDD. And then, as far as dissolution is concerned, so there are three situations where the CDD can essentially be dissolved. And the first one is, within five years after the effective date of the ordinance, should the county adopt the ordinance creating the CDD. If the landowner hasn't received the development permit, then essentially, the district dissolves automatically and that's what happens. But they have the development order permit. My understanding is that the zoning has already been approved for the development. So that's not a situation that would be applicable here. The next one is, if it becomes inactive under 189.062, "The Board of County Commissioners shall be informed and shall take appropriate action." I'm unsure what that appropriate action would be, but that's another situation of dissolution. And then finally, if the district has no outstanding financial obligations and no operating or maintenance responsibility upon the petition of the district, the district may be dissolved by a non-emergency ordinance of the local government that created it. So, in summary, it's not automatic that if the district defaults, that the county would assume the obligations. The county has that option available to it, but it's not, it's not an automatic situation. But unfortunately, I don't know what would happen, say, that the district did default on its obligations and the county didn't want to assume the district's obligations. I'm unsure as to what would happen next. Maybe the district could file in bankruptcy court for protection. That I'm not sure about.
But the O&M expenses would somehow have to be borne by somebody?
They would, yes. But they're assessing the properties, so every tax role, the landowners are going to have to pay assessments. So, I guess as long as the tax role, they keep submitting the tax role to the tax collector, the tax bill will go out with the assessments on it and they'll have to be paid.
You're assuming that there's still a CDD in which to...
Yes.
Identify those parties that are obligated.
Right. So it's not without risk, but...
And I guess that's what Commissioner McKinley is focused on. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. My comments weren't in relationship to defaulting. They were in relationship to dissolution. And I think that the, for lack of a better term, the Reedy Creek legislation really bypassed a lot of what was in Florida statute. Because normally, when the legislature passes a bill that seeks to dissolve a special district, then it goes back to the electors in that special district who then have to vote on final approval. The Reedy Creek legislation eliminated that requirement and automatically dissolved it. And very specifically here, this is the staff analysis from the House bill. This says, "Unless otherwise provided by law or ordinance, when there is a dissolution of a special district government, the special district transfers the title to all property owned by the pre-existing special district to the local general-purpose government, either a county or municipality, which shall also assume all indebtedness of the pre-existing special district." So it's very clear. In the matter of dissolution, I wasn't referring to default.
Thank you. All right. So we have some comments here. And Commissioner Kerner wanted you, Commissioner Sax, can you, you want to...
I'd like to, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask staff, before we get into the public comments, if I could, Mayor. Specifically to our attorney, knowing all you know about this applicant and this motion on the proposed ordinance, are you, is your opinion consistent with that of the staff recommendation to adopt this CDC, this proposed amendment, sir?
Yeah, I don't think it's my place to say that. I mean, based on what I've seen in the staff report, I think staff did the proper analysis based on the six factors. And that's, I guess that would be my position on it.
Okay. And if I could, with the head of staff, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have had, over the years, 16 of these types of governments or CDCs in our county. Of those have, we had a Disney World-type of situation where the governing board, which would be, in our situation, the Board of County Commissioners, taking the place of the governor, would dissolve them and then therefore, those obligations would annuler to the people who live in them.
I'm not aware of any. I'm only aware of the 10 that we have looked at over the past 20 or so years. There may be others in the municipalities and we're not privy to what they've done. So, but I'm not aware of anything to your question.
And of those 10, have there ever been, has there ever been an issue where, and I know there's been a reference to the Reedy Creek, I think it was in 1968 that that was established, that this would be a similar situation to the Disney World dissolution of that by the governor? So have we ever had a situation here in the county whereby we have dissolved any of these, any of these organizations, these structures?
I'm not aware of anything.
Brian?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before I get to Commissioner Marino, I'm looking in the summary here and it's talking about the ODD, the CDD assessments being paid in addition to HOA assessments. Is the HOA ultimately responsible for the CDD debt, should the CDD default?
That's a little beyond my pay grade.
Okay.
I really can't answer that question. I think that's, that would be, I don't know how they're going to structure, I just don't know how they're going to structure the community outside of the CDD. Is there going to be a master association? Is there going to be a sub-association?
So, the HOA, from your understanding, will be the entire, both the newly developed and the former community, will be a single HOA?
I don't know. I think there are multiple homeowners' associations within this community. So, I don't know. And I don't know if this community is going to become a sub-association of the master association. I just don't know that, because that's not, I don't, I don't recall seeing any of that in the petition or not, so.
Yeah, Mr. Rutter, I'm certainly willing to hear your input.
I don't think we had that information. That might be a question best posed as well to the applicant to provide some insight in that area. And I would certainly tell you that for the purpose of the review that we're conducting on the CDD and the statutory review, I don't know if we've gotten into that level of information or review.
No. The only thing I would add is that any PUD is required to have an association to actually be responsible for whatever is in the development order conditions that's out there. How they choose, because they're part of another PUD and all that, that's, I think, way beyond the level of detail that we typically get into in a development approval. And so, again, we don't deal with a lot of CDDs. We're not like what we see typically over on the West Coast where there's quite a few and even in central Florida where it's almost part and parcel of how they do development there. They're very rare in Palm Beach County, so there's just not the level of familiarity with them.
All right. Well, again, I'm not going to have anybody come up right now to make a presentation on that. I think that the best case is that we'll postpone, worst case, this is going to go south before we finish today. So, let's see how this finishes up. Commissioner Marino, you are recognized.
Thank you. Todd and Tony, maybe you could come up to the podium, because I do have several questions. And the first one would be, the CDD that's getting, that would, that we're discussing today, if it is put in place, is it only the new, absolute new residents who are buying in the, for lack of, I don't know what the name is, Forest Oaks?
Certain Lakes.
Well, Certain Lakes, Forest Oaks, whatever it is, they are the only ones that are paying into this, right?
Yes.
So, any of the surrounding HOAs are not part of this CDD?
Correct.
Okay. And if this does happen, how is, how are the purchasers notified about them now having to pay into a CDD?
There's disclosure requirements by law and how big the font has to be, how big everything has to be in the closing statement about you are buying in a community development district. And it's very, very strict and very spelled out in the statute about the disclosure requirements, as well as additional requirements that I believe are conditions precedent that staff is recommending.
And if that original homeowner sells their home, how does that notification go to the second buyer?
Right. So, the, all of the lien, the debt, so if the CDD issues a bond, the debt gets recorded in a lien, so it appears on a title search. So it should appear on anybody doing a title search, it should appear as a recorded document, a recorded lien, I should say.
And who is the bondholder?
So the bondholder is typically a large Wall Street firm. You know, they usually issue, an underwriter sells the bonds. And I mean, you know, one of the things about this is it's more inexpensive financing, like it's cheaper, it's cheaper capital markets because it's a, it's a local government, so it's a tax-exempt bond, and so there are lower interest rates. So the ultimate bondholders is usually some large, you know, hedge fund of some kind, kind of no-name, large corporate hedge fund.
But at, from this juncture, the, is there a fee that's going to be paid to the tax collector because he or our tax collector will be doing the work of the collection and the processing and then they're remitting back to the bondholder? Is that correct?
Yes. So both the property praiser and the tax collector collect a fee of approximately 1% of the total tax bill.
And, I know Brian tried to answer this question, but Todd, since you're in the business, have there any, other than Reedy Creek, which is a totally different animal altogether, has there been a history of default in the state of Florida with anybody that's done a CDD?
Oh, sure. I mean, the Great Recession of 2009 and 10 was, there was a ton of CDD defaults. But, the only people that lost money were the big hedge funds, the big hedge funds. And then, actually, the CDDs, the CDDs in place actually wound up being the mechanism that allowed them to come back from the dead. I also want to make sure that you all, as a body, understand that, so, staff showed the, showed the map of CDDs, okay? This, in northern Palm Beach County, so I used to be the mayor of Jupiter. In northern Palm Beach County, there's the Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District, right? It's a five-member board and it has 47 units of development. So that's why there's no CDDs up in the North County, because there's, every unit of development in Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District is a CDD that the governing board, instead of you all, is the board up there. And it's, I don't know, it's like 50 miles, square miles worth of development. Abacoa, Alton, PGA National, IBIS, all of these types of things. Indian Trail Improvement District has, I think, at least a dozen units of development in their surrounding areas, which is just a CDD within it. So this is a, we're asking for a CDD because we don't have a Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District, or we don't have, we don't sit within the Lake Worth Drainage District to be able to do a unit of development. So you all would wind up being the approving authority in this case. So this is not like, you're not, we're not like pioneering land-secured financing. This is, this is what I do for a living every day. So to put it in perspective, I create and manage these things. And I totally get it, that you guys have trepidation of it, but it's really just a financing tool. So my company, a lot of people like wonder, what did Todd do for a living, right? So I wasn't the mayor, that 20 grand that I got to be the mayor of Jupiter didn't quite pay the bills in Jupiter. This is what I do for a living. I have a company, we have 30 people, and we manage over 110 special districts. Our biggest client is Tradition up in Port St. Lucie. They have 16 CDDs in Port St. Lucie. We manage it with six people. Ave Maria is called the Ave Maria Stewardship Community District. It's one of our biggest clients. It's over there in eastern Naples County, things like that. And so, special districts are all over Palm Beach County and the state of Florida. So this is not, so I appreciate like kind of the back and forth. And I totally get that some people just, just don't like them. But the truth is, it's really just giving people the opportunity to have, you know, finance the infrastructure over the long term. And truth be told, the reason these things usually work, okay, is because if you're on average, most people live in a house between five and seven years. The CDD assessment runs with the land. It doesn't run with the individual person. So when you sell the house, that CDD assessment, you know, stays with the person. And so what this gives the development community the chance to do is finance infrastructure over 30 years, which is the typical useful life for infrastructure. If I could just take one more second, you guys were asking about what would happen if the CDD assets wound up going to the county? I bet you I know what would happen. You all would say, how are we going to charge those guys for not doing what they were going to do? And what you should do is form a municipal benefit services district, an MBSU. It's a mechanism that the county can have to basically assess folks. It's just a different word for a CDD. It's just, it's just the same thing. It's the way to assess people for improvements being done to their land. So, all of this kind of notion about what happens if everything goes south or everything goes wrong, the county should have very, very little concern about that actually happening. The biggest concern is affordability. Like, you know, how are, how are we going to deliver, you know, affordable housing to this area? And like I said, that's the biggest, that's kind of the biggest selling point. But I also get, I also totally get as elected officials, you kind of don't like extra layer of governments, you don't like extra layers of assessments and so on and so forth, but this is how the state of Florida develops.
I have one last question. So the CDD would be charging the new residents. Is there any benefit to the HOAs already surrounding that will not be contributing to the CDD?
Ask it one more time? I'm not sure I can get where you're going.
Okay. Is there, with this infrastructure in place, with this new infrastructure in place, will there be any benefit at no cost to them to the surrounding HOAs? Does it improve their infrastructure in any way?
So, I think the answer is probably, because there's going to be a master drainage system for the stormwater management. Stormwater is code word for lakes, right? Especially in a project like this. So it's likely that they'll actually benefit, benefit from it without a cost.
Okay. I think I've done it this time. Thank you.
All right. Before I get to the vice mayor, again, just to clarify, the only thing we're dealing with here today is whether we're going to defer some of the expense of acquiring a property, if this is ever built, out 30 years, so that the ultimate price of these units will hopefully be 15 or so thousand dollars less than they would be today. But is there a guarantee that this is really going to annuler to the benefit of the purchasers and not somehow be a benefit to the developer?
The only guarantee that we can give you is if the CDD is not formed, is that there's no chance of it.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wodraska. You actually peeked a couple of questions in your, in what you were doing. So, if there was to be a CDD and I bought one of these homes, could I, in fact, if I was a cash buyer, just choose to pay off my $15,000 assessment and no longer, not have to pay the tax collector, the 1%, not have to pay any additional interest on that bond?
Yes. But most people don't do that because if you were to sell your house in five years, you know, that, you would have paid it off for the future purchasers. But, you could also market that as the fact that you have paid off your home, so that your, that your house would be, you know, that much more incrementally attractive financially to the next buyer.
Well, could I roll, could I roll it into my mortgage and then, and so then I have it as, I can declare the interest on my mortgage?
I don't believe that's an option.
All right. And then, and this may not be something you can, it may be outside of your wheelhouse, but how does, how would that impact a mortgage application, or, you know, when they go to analyze your ability to repay, right? They're looking at the cost of the house, of the home, they're looking at your income, right? When they, when they then go to, and obviously, $1,400 a year is not, is not a huge amount of money when they're looking at it, but would that, in fact, come in as a barrier for some folks, or is it not considered?
Well, I think each lender has their parameters about whether the buyer is a good candidate to lend them money or not. And usually, they, you know, so obviously, the biggest ticket item is the purchase price, but then there's also the annual carrying costs. And all, and all the costs are typically disclosed right up front, including HOA, POA, CDD, insurance types of costs, all the, all the things that go into, you know, the purchasing power of a potential buyer. So, I mean, typically, like I said, this is not, this program that we're talking about is not unique. I mean, every single house, every single house that's built in Palm Beach County has some sort of special district, you know, assessment, you know, and these are assessments, not taxes, to kind of go to what Commissioner McKinley was talking about, and that is correct. So, but it doesn't, it doesn't, in fact, so non-out-of-lorm just basically means it's not tied into your millage rate. It's benefit-based. But, so every lender looks at the total, the total expense that would be borne as the, as the entire total. And not, it's not like, you know, hiding from it. It would be disclosed and out there, open to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Todd, one last question, just to clarify a point you made, and I think that the vice mayor hit on something that I found interesting. If someone wanted to buy out of this on the front end, didn't want to pay, or have this spread out over 30 years, so that they're willing to pay the 15,000, whatever that number ultimately becomes, this would be something like a sewer assessment where you decide you don't want to pay it over 30 years, or reclaim water assessment because of the pipe is going through your property. You are done. So, once you make the decision at closing to pay this off that day, then you're no longer obligated, your land is no longer part of the CDD? How would that work?
So you're done in terms of paying off the debt, but there is an operation and maintenance component of an assessment also, to just simply administer the district. So you don't, so you would still get a line item, but so, for instance, in this case, just to kind of throw numbers, your neighbor, your neighbor would have a $1,400 assessment plus $100 worth of operation and maintenance, but you would only have $100 worth of operation and maintenance. But it's still beyond there. And you can't like, you can't just buy out of it, because once you're, once you're in the boundaries of it, you're in it, until it doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner, please.
Thank you. Quick follow-up. One of the statements you made was, there would be no chance of it. I don't know what you were referring to. Do you remember saying that? I think it was from Commissioner Marino's or...
The no chance of it, I was referring to affordability, like, the CDD gives the opportunity for affordability. Without it, you don't, you don't have that same, that same opportunity because you wouldn't be able to lower the financing costs. That's all I was talking about.
Okay. All right. Wasn't a reference to there's no chance of the improvements being made or the operation to being taken care of? No?
The, well, there's, I guess, I can't, I can't sit there and say there's no chance of anything. You know, I don't, I don't want to allude to the fact that there's no chance of anything happening. Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that, by saying to this board that if we don't pass this, something is not going to happen for the residents that purchased in this new development.
Right. I was just simply making this, making the statement that the opportunity for more affordability is gone. That's all I was saying.
I got you. And affordability in this context doesn't mean reducing the purchase price of a home. It means extending the debt out over an additional 30 years.
No. I refer to the ability to lower the initial purchase price.
Okay. Lower it, but push that debt over 30 years. You're not erasing that, you're just extending the life of the debt much longer.
Right. I'm talking, I'm talking initial purchase price.
Okay.
I'm not saying longer, I'm not saying lowering costs over the lifetime of the...
Yeah. I mean, affordability sounds like we're lowering the burden on a resident. We're not lowering any burden here, we're just extending the amount of time to pay it with interest. Fair enough.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to address some comments made by one of my colleagues. You know, the reason I brought up the special session legislation, you know, I've had my ear on the ground and been monitoring Tallahassee for over two decades, and I know I've got three colleagues that spent some time up there during that period, and there have always been... And there have always been whispers and a distaste for special districts, but nobody ever did anything about it. And a few weeks ago, in less than 48 hours, we saw a bill filed, debated, passed, and signed into law by the governor that not only has the potential to eliminate Reedy Creek, but it affects special districts in Franklin County, Hamilton County, Bradford County, Broward County, Marion County, the city of Ocala, and I believe the one in Broward might be the city of Coral Springs, but I'm not entirely sure on that. There's still debate and research going on about how many other special districts might be affected. Now, the legislation does allow them to come back and try to be reauthorized, and that requires that local bills be filed. And my three colleagues up here can tell you, there's no guarantee that a local bill passes into law, and it's not easy to get a bill through the session. And if you manage to irritate somebody, that could be the death of your local bill no matter how good the content of that legislation is. And so, while we certainly haven't had that situation arise in Palm Beach County over the last forty, fifty years or since the county's existence, there is a little bit of trepidation on my part based on what I just witnessed during the last special session about how quickly you could see something like that happen. And so, I can't go just based on experience of the past. In this county, I just watch what's going on in the legislature right now, and things can happen overnight. And that's where my concerns are. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd, just one quick question. Vice Mayor Weiss had asked if someone wanted to pay off the CDD. If they wanted to pay off the CDD, they wouldn't pay fifteen thousand dollars. Would they, would they have to pay the full forty-two thousand dollars?
No, it would be closer, it would be right around fifteen thousand dollars. It would basically, yeah, it would be like the fifteen thousand dollars. Rather than paying off, the forty-two, I'm guessing, is you just basically took the fourteen hundred over 30 years. No, it would be the fifteen.
So, would the bondholders who approved the bond, would it prove for you to just, instead of paying fifteen thousand, now you're paying, instead of paying forty-two, you're paying...
They get their, they get their payment right away. We just call them prepayments. It's a, it's a prepayment that anybody has the ability to pay, pay that off at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think it's time for a public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker will be Anthony Palumbo, followed by Barbara Soprano.
Mr. Palumbo, do you have anything else you want to add?
I really don't think so, but thank you for inviting me up today.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a Ms. Soprano that would like to speak? And then Robert Brewer will be after Ms. Soprano.
Mr. Brewer, you can take the other rostrum.
And then Michael Falk. So, there's your lineup for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us today. Someone said earlier that this development would not affect existing homes. This is simply not true. These homes snake around, or I should say, the golf course snakes around through our community, the Lucerne Lakes community, and some of our homes open up onto the golf course. When you have four or five years of construction in your backyard, this will definitely affect us with noise, with trucks, with dirt. This will go on for years in our lives. Many of the people that are my neighbors, I've been there almost 20 years, we're an older community. It's a lovely, quiet community, very well-maintained. We don't have anywhere else to go, especially with the nature of the prices of homes right now. We need people such as your board to please take that in mind when you talk about this. We're desperate to keep our community just as it is. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your remarks.
Hi. My name is Robert Brewer, and thank you guys for listening to us. I agree with her. You know, we, we live in the small community, and a lot of us that, when we moved in there, it's a 55 and older, this is where we were going to end up. You know, this is our last home. And I'm 70, and what do they say? The average age of a male is 78. So, if the next five and a half years of my life is in construction, I don't know. You know, it just seems that we were under the assumption, the master board for the, all the HOAs, I believe there's six of them in this community, and the master board had the PDU where the golf course was not to be changed until at least 2080. I don't know what happened with that. I don't know how they got that far. But when Todd, the mayor, said that it doesn't affect anybody, it does affect us a lot. And I don't know where it goes as far as the CDD goes. And everybody says, you know, when he said that in Jupiter and all that, they don't have it, and they have the tradition, you know, all those companies, well, those companies are probably pretty, pretty well-respected. The company that's taking over to build this is rated F by the Better Business Bureau. So, and you guys developing if anything's going to default or whatever, I mean, you look at the company that is proposing all this, and they just don't have a very good reputation. And thank you for listening to us.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, following Mr. Falk, we'll have Edward Hinkel and Lisa Rivas.
Mr. Hinkel, you can take the microphone there. You're recognized. Three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to say that the comments have been great by you guys, so I'm glad I voted on all of you being in office. I think it offers us a lot to think about. I happen to be a commercial real estate broker for 40 years, and I do see the benefits to CDDs. There's been some successful ventures on this fact. Jupiter, like was told by Todd, you know, had bonds in place for the infrastructure. They had bonds in place for their second infrastructure. The bondholders were paid off first in the first one, and then the second one got paid off second, and there is a difference in price. In terms of values, look to basically even country club communities where you have a community that has a country club and has a fee that you pay versus, let's say, PJ National, that you're not mandated to borrow, to be a part of the country club. The houses sell for a higher number where there aren't those payments. So, it's very easy to say that if you're not going to have that payment, if you're going to have the payment there and you're not going to have a payment, that those houses that don't have the payments are going to have maybe a little bit more value for a short period of time than the ones that do. But to sit with a golf course that's not going to have anything going on also has its dilemmas and problems as well. So, the CDDs have been a great way of assessing this. It only, it only defers the whole, the whole costs, okay? But it creates the benefit because the homeowner will pay less. It's just, it's just evident in the fact that they'll pay less upfront. It's not going to be a lesser payment over the term, but like you said, they can pay it off upfront, and they have the, they have the ability to do that. So, really, in terms of the whole structure, it's, it's an acceptable financing mechanism. I think it's something to keep, but I think you guys brought up some great points about this that maybe need to be further defined in further discussions to make sure that anything that you're concerned about is addressed upfront, and it's not going to become a problem later. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Ed Hinkel, I am currently the president of the master HOA for this development. We are made up of eight HOAs currently. The new development would be our ninth HOA, okay? The CDD would be strictly responsible for the infrastructure for the new development, the ninth HOA. If it isn't passed, that HOA would be responsible for any costs for maintenance or damage or whatever after it is construction. Of course, the new people would be paying for the initial construction of the infrastructure. But after that, the HOA would be responsible for any of the damages within that area, okay? The master's responsible for the entire district. This CDD has nothing to do with the existing homeowners. We will pay nothing into this. But if something happens to the infrastructure within the whole, the master has to go to that individual HOA and say, you've got to fix this infrastructure because it affects everybody. It's not just you have your own, and you have your own, and you have your own. It's an overall infrastructure, okay? If something happened with this and they had a CDD, the master could go to that board, which their only responsibility would be taking care of that infrastructure, nothing else. Not like a normal HOA that has to deal with everything else that goes on in HOA. Their only responsibility for that board would be the infrastructure. And it would be a great service to a master association to have that ability, other than to go to a local HOA who, under most circumstances, doesn't deal with infrastructure. I mean, right now, the Lucerne Lakes infrastructure is 50 years old, okay? We're, we're getting old, and things are going to happen. But right now, we don't have to deal with it, and they don't have to deal with it. When it happens, it's going to be a new ballgame for everybody, and this would be an easier ballgame for the master to go to a group that that's all they take care of, is that infrastructure. Thank you.
Just a quick question, since you are president of the master. Who is ultimately responsible for the drainage as far as the whole area, both the area that's being discussed today, Lucerne Lakes, and the current eight HOAs? Is that the master or each individual HOA?
It's a combination because the master owns some property. The individual HOAs own their areas, so it's all intertwined. The master has the basic boulevard throughout the development. There's infrastructure there, including stormwater. But there are stormwater within each HOA, and each HOA is responsible, but it's intertwined. One moves into another into another. I think ultimately, in the realm of things, the master has the overall responsibility, but they push back to the local, the individual HOAs.
And at your testimony today at the master HOA, is in favor of this proposal?
Yeah. We met on the 16th of May. We heard the presentation, and the board members questioned them, just like you questioned them today. They had the same kind of questions, but there was no negativity, basically because it's not affecting the existing eight because we, it's affecting the new one. This, this thing is going to affect the new HOA, none of the existing that's there now.
Thank you for coming up.
Sure.
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
A little closer to the microphone.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Rivas of Saul Ewing, Aronstein, and Lear. I have with me my partner, Stephen Applebaum. He's here to answer any questions you might have on the ongoing litigation. We represent Sunrise of Palm Beach, Palm Beach Condominium Association, and we're here to object to the petition to grant the establishment of Forest Oaks Community Development District. Last October, a large number of residents who reside throughout Lucerne Lakes PUD came forward to express concerns that...
Lisa, can you pull closer to the mic?
That the proposed project to develop residences on the golf course would violate their private rights. This commission expressed concerns and doubts that the planned redevelopment would ever be built because of tangential issues related to private rights that can be enforced in the judicial system. The association and a number of residents have filed civil action seeking to prevent the redevelopment of the golf course's housing in violation of the restrictive covenant that preserves the golf course and recreation areas in perpetuity as recreation. Until the court has adjudicated the pending litigation, it's premature for the county commission to review, consider, or adopt an ordinance creating a CDD on a project that may never be built. To allow the creation of a CDD, Florida statutes requires the commission to consider the public hearing record, statutory criteria, and additional review criteria created by this board in 2003. This petition does not meet that criteria. Therefore, this petition must fail. This petition fails criteria number six because the petitioner has not obtained consent of all landowners within the proposed district boundary. This is a proposed site plan graphic. The yellow highlights indicate land owned by Lucerne Lakes Master Association, not the petitioner and not the golf course owner. The petition fails criteria B1 because the petitioner is proposing to use CDD funds to modify Lucerne Lakes Boulevard and some of the existing lakes or drainage outside of the boundaries of the CDD. This violates the additional review criteria created by this board, which prohibits off-site improvements to be funded by the CDD. This petition fails criteria number three. The land within the district is not sufficiently compact nor sufficiently contiguous to be developable as one functional interrelated community as the land is physically divided by existing communities. This proposal is shoehorning a new community into an existing community with independent governance. Since the petition fails to comply with statutory requirements and the litigation has not been fully adjudicated, we respectfully request that you deny this petition. Mr. Applebaum and myself are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your comments, and I don't see any questions at this point in time. Thank you.
And Stephen Applebaum, did you want to be, did you want to be allotted three minutes? You have a speaker's card and...
No, Commissioner, but thank you.
Mayor, I believe that concludes the speaking comment cards, and if I missed anybody...
Did you want to be recognized? Did you fill out a card?
I did, but I'm sorry I didn't put speak on it.
Okay. Your name, please?
My name's Nick Pizzano. I'm the owner of the Forest Oaks Golf Course.
Okay. We'll make the change on your card that you're speaking.
Thank you. I apologize for that.
Not a problem.
Nice to see you all again. Thank you.
Always good to see our constituents.
Without a mask, too. Fantastic. What, Ed is the president of our master association. What he was saying about the CDD would, would improve the whole community because most of the golf courses, a lot of the drainage of the community. So, so the golf course snakes around all communities except maybe one out of the eight HOAs. I think maybe two of them. The rest are close to the golf course. So, to have a CDD and to do this infrastructure improvement is going to improve all the drainage in all the golf courses, on all, on six of them at least, because it's going to be upgraded and it's going to be, you know, to the standard of today, which is the golf, the community was built in 1971, I think, '72, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, so it would really improve the drainage of the whole community. It would improve the community also because what, what they would do with the infrastructure process in the community. Also, about, about the speaker before me, about filing a lawsuit to stop us to, from doing the community, you know, anybody can file a lawsuit, you know? I really want to say this. The lawsuit could have no basis, could have some basis. But if I wanted to sue, which I don't want to sue anybody, I never did, never will, but if anybody can file a lawsuit, whether it's frivolous, whether it's, whether it's, there's no basis or stuff, and that'll come to fruition soon enough. But, so, I would really argue against, please, voting against us because of any lawsuit that's out there. And, you know, then I just, that'll come to fruition through the court system as it should. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate those. All right. Yes, Commissioner?
Mayor, I have probably about 30 or 40 non-speaking cards. Is it the mayor's preference to have these read into the record or...
I think we can receive and file, but if you could just give us a critique of if they are opposed or if they are in favor, it would be helpful.
Sure. The vast majority, if not all, non-speaking cards are in support. The general statements read as follows. A lot of them are carbon copies of each other. The Forest Oaks Community Development District, well, let's see, get one that I can read.
One that you could read.
Yeah. The, the Forest Oaks Community Development District all fund the ongoing and maintenance of the internal roads, drainage, and parks that will add value to the community. They all seem to be similar or the same, and I think there's probably about 30 or 40.
Okay. We will receive and file without objection. All right. I think before us, and it's, it's important that we just keep the issues very focused on what's before us today. We're not deciding on whether to approve the, this development. All we're deciding today, if we do go forward with the vote on this motion, is whether to approve the CDD. And I know that Commissioner Bernard has already telegraphed his position on this, so I'm certainly willing to hear whether we have a motion or whether we have more discussion at this point. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the establishment of the Forest Oaks
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the establishment of the Forest Oaks Community Development District.
Second.
I have a motion to deny. I have a second by Commissioner Kerners, so the motion to postpone will not be heard at this point, and we're gonna go forward with a debate on the motion to deny the establishment of the Forest Oaks Community Development District. I'll take any further discussion. Commissioner Kerners?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate everyone's attention and time here today. To sort of reiterate the comments of the mayor, you know, there's a narrow issue before the board today, and we're not weighing in on a host of other issues that I know are important to many people in this room. And I'll preface this by saying, when the zoning application was before this board, I didn't represent this area of the county. I do now with the redistricted lines. It wouldn't have changed my evaluation, but I am now the district commissioner, and what was before us in the past was a zoning application. And while I didn't appreciate, and I wouldn't appreciate having homes built in the back of my neighborhood and on a golf course, my vote at the time was that they met the requirement to the zoning application. Granted, there are a host of other issues, and I think the attorney mentioned the tangential issue, and I think that was a quote that I made, is that there are some other issues that need to be litigated, and that's not before the board. So let me narrow in on why I'm opposed to this. And I thought, Mayor, or Mr. Wodraska, that you did an incredible job. I think you have a host of institutional knowledge on this and that we all benefited by your expertise here today. But at the end of the day, and your candor was very much appreciated, you spoke about how many of these CDDs had failed in the past in Florida during the '06 to 2010 time period. And it was about 180 CDDs went insolvent, add a 600 in the state. And so there's a lot of criticism, and rightfully so scrutiny, of these government entities that are created. And what we have here is a developer that bought a piece of property from the golf course owner, that certainly they're right with their intent to develop it. The land use was on it already, we all are aware of that. So there wasn't a public policy decision as to whether there should be homes on those golf courses or not. But my assumption at the time was that the developer was willing to and was in a position to finance or pay for the infrastructure improvements that needed to be in place for them to make a profit and build these homes, and that's fine. I support that, it's capitalism. But it's been cast today as, and I think improperly cast, as a way to suggest that there would be more affordability. And unfortunately, from my perspective, that's not true. Certainly, we can differ on the opinion, but when we talk about affordability, there are ways to make homes more affordable. The government can insert its thumb on and decrease the price of acquisition of land, for example, or waiving different fees and whatnot. And we do that as a board, that's a fair public policy issue. What we're all, all we're doing here is extending the life of the debt over several years. And I think the better way, one of the things we talked about at length, and Commissioner McKinley hit on a lot of this, is what happens when there's a dissolution of these CDDs or they become insolvent. For me, the way to avoid all that is just to have the developer who need is required to bring these infrastructures to bear for the new residents, to front the cost of it and build it into the home the natural way that it needs to be built in. To say that we're going to decrease the price of the home on the front end, but then, was it triple or almost triple the amount of principal through interest that needs to be paid back, is not a fair way. It's sort of a bait and switch. And so if somebody's going to purchase a home in this new community, assuming it's built, they ought, you know, we ought to be candid with them about what the cost is. The infrastructure needs to go there, and it doesn't have to involve another layer of government being involved in people's lives. If the home is worth $450,000, and part of that cost is because there needed to be drainage and roads that weren't there before, then we should go into that transaction with our eyes open. And I'll tell you that when I purchased my home in Winston Trails in 2016, I also looked in Osprey Oaks, which is right down the street. And I know that there are disclosure requirements, and I'm not going to attack any specific company, but when I went into Osprey Oaks, it was not disclosed to me that there was an additional 30 years at $1,500 a year, I think is what it was. Wasn't until I went onto the tax rolls and looked at that parcel that I learned that I would be obligated to pay that. And hopefully, most buyers would do that due diligence, but oftentimes, they don't. And so there's a lot of risk for unintended consequences in the creation of the CDD. And that's a big deal, $45,000 in debt that you're not aware of, or that you become obligated to pay. That whole issue is taken care of very succinctly. If it's paid upfront, or as part of, the money's borrowed by the borrower in a mortgage, it does run with the land, and if you leave early, then, you know, you've paid down a part of that principal, but it's built into the sales price when you leave. And so if we talk about less government intrusion, and we talk about two private parties consenting to a private deal, that's great. That's the American foundation. I don't see a public policy reason, though, for the government to insert itself into this transaction at this time and create, at a minimum, 30 years of bureaucratic layers and costs and attorney's fees and management fees that don't need to be borne, that don't need to be borne in a way that is financed to, not to the benefit of those that are buying the homes. So, I'm not a fan of CDDs. There's a lot of reasons why they shouldn't be used in this instance. I'm confident that in instances that they have been used in the past, with some exception, that it was the proper mechanism and tool. But I didn't find out about the CDD proposal until after the zoning application was approved. It wouldn't have changed my vote. But my assumption was that the developer was coming into this with the ability to finance the improvements that need to be made, so that those homes can be built and sold and occupied by residents in this county. And so I think that's the route that we should go. Ultimately, by voting this down, we are guaranteed to save those homeowners that purchase a significant amount of money. Maybe they'll have to pay it on the front end or back end through their mortgage, or if they pay cash, they can get rid of it right away. But I don't see a compelling reason for the government to be involved in this development. And so those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just add, you know, the master association, the president came in and said that the master association, they support this CDD, but the future buyers will be paying for future infrastructure, or, you know, they're getting a benefit forever and they're never paying for it. So these new homeowners will be paying for this forever, and I don't believe that's fair to the future residents. Of course, they're gonna support it, because they don't have to pay for it. You know, Commissioner Kerners stated that he would have still voted for the zoning. I know for me, if this item, if I knew that there was gonna be a CDD, I wouldn't have voted for that zoning, period. So that's what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. I'm gonna weigh in before we have a vote. You know, I wish it was a little bit more defined as far as liability if things don't go well, but I have no problem with the idea of deferring, you know, a payment. I mean, we, many of us cannot purchase a home for cash. And so the fact is that we take out a mortgage loan, and that means that a $500,000 home will probably cost us a million dollars by the time we're done paying off this loan over 30 years. So, I'm not offended by the idea that a $15,000 obligation balloons out to $40,000 or $35,000, because that's just the nature of the beast. I also am not offended by the idea of being able to reduce the initial cost to a purchaser if we could be opening this up to more people having the opportunity to purchase these homes. I think that that's certainly something that we as a board want to do. We're talking about workforce housing here. We're talking about making homes more affordable for people to acquire. So, that's not upsetting me either. I would like to see more definition to this. I would like to know about the liabilities. I'd like to know if this thing collapses. Make sure that, again, the county is not liable. I'm not sure that that's been fleshed out, but, you know, I think, and I'm pretty sure that this doesn't kill the deal, that I'm sure that the developer has the wherewithal to do the improvements, and ultimately, it's just gonna be added on to the cost of the home at the day that the prospective buyer is going to sit down and come to the closing and have to have more cash in their pocket or a larger loan to be able to pay this. So, I see this as a vehicle that has promise. I understand my colleagues' trepidation, and certainly understand that, you know, this may not fly today. But I certainly understand and I embrace the idea of making this more affordable, but I would have liked to have seen it more defined, so that this number, which obviously is not in stone, and numbers change because costs are gonna go up. We know the supply chain is impacting what's going on with development right now, so there's no guarantee that can be given to us today that these homes will be selling at this number, and this number is because they have been able to reduce them by $15,000 because of the CDD. It would've been nice to have more definition, but I certainly can understand that this doesn't look like it may make it today. Commissioner McKinley, I'll take your comment, and then I'll call for a vote.
Thank you. Actually, I have a question. I'm a little nervous, because I usually don't ask a question that I don't already know the answer to, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. When an applicant is seeking a mortgage from a bank, isn't the bank looking at the total cost associated with that home? And so I know, like, the price of the actual home is going to be lower, but isn't the banker, the mortgage broker, looking at the other costs associated with that? So wouldn't they be looking at the CDD debt as part of the mortgage approval process?
Again, I'm not a banker, and I don't know if anybody wants to opine, but certainly I would look upon this as a second mortgage.
Okay. I mean, and so we're talking about the overall lower cost of the house, but when they're applying for the mortgage, it's gonna be taken into consideration one way or another.
It probably would. Commissioner Weiss, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Weiss.
I actually, I have a question. So, one to staff. I know with zoning applications, there are, if not approved, is there a timeframe, similarly, is there a timeframe if this is not approved to come bring it back?
I'm not aware of anything, but I'll look down to our attorneys.
Yeah, no, there isn't. It's, if you deny it, that's it.
But, I mean, they could reapply again?
I assume they could reapply. There's nothing in the statute that prohibits that. But there, I mean, it is, is a $15,000 filing fee associated with it, so.
I guess one year.
That's probably incentive, maybe, not to reapply, I don't know.
Well, I guess my, and I think, I think where, and I think there were a lot of interesting questions today, but I think, I think where, where I'm sort of, and I think it would also be helpful, if it's helpful to me, I assume it'd be helpful to my colleagues as well, to understand the stack financing. And that, and I was hopeful for a postponement on this item, so that that could actually be illustrated. When you're looking at multiple financing for these projects, and how you create the stack, and what the savings, because whether it gets financed via a mortgage, or whether it gets financed via a bond, or some other mechanism, how they're putting together to put this entire project together is gonna determine ultimately the sales price of the homes and ultimately, the total cost of buyers, because most people can't pay cash, and they're gonna, they're gonna finance it over time. And if the bonds, and I don't know what these kind of bonds go for, but if a mortgage is going for 5% and a bond is going for 2.5%, that's a 2.5% savings that these homeowners would have over putting it in, putting it into a mortgage. But unfortunately, we didn't have that discussion today about, you know, what that savings or additional, potentially even additional cost, maybe, maybe it is more expensive. But I think, you know, in trying to understand creating this district to, I mean, since it was brought to us as a way to lower the cost, I don't think we've had enough information presented to determine how that it would in fact lower the cost.
Vice Mayor, a motion to substitute, a motion to postpone to June 23rd would be in order if you would like to make it.
I would make that motion, then.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. So we're gonna now move to a motion to postpone to June 23rd. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I appreciate that, Mayor, because from what I'm understanding today from my colleagues' discussion, which has been very informative, and as well as what the community wants, is that this may be a vehicle to lower the cost of home ownership. It is a type of structure that would lend itself to people being able to purchase a home and take care of their own costs, drainage, sewage, and things like that. What is compelling to me is that it seems to have worked in Palm Beach County. May not have worked in other communities, but I'm not in the legislature anymore. This is my concern, it's Palm Beach County. And like the Vice Mayor, I'd like to learn a little more about it. It's a first time for me to really review it. I'd like to hear from any of the residents that this would affect. I have yet to meet any of you or speak, or emails, which I would welcome if it is postponed. I think it's an important issue to review because of the costs, of rising costs of mortgages, and the possibility of home ownership in a different structure than what we have with our financial institutions today. So I would certainly promote, just give us, just give it a little time. Let me, give me a little more time to listen to people, see what they have to say, and talk to staff and the attorney about the pitfalls before I would make a decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Kerners, you're recognized.
Thank you. And if it looks like the board's gonna postpone this issue on the issue of the CDD actually being an affordability tool, which I think we've proven today that it's not, but the one thing that I can't, that I can't resolve, and Commissioner McKinley brought this up very stuteously, is that we're essentially making it so that this debt can't be deducted through a mortgage interest deduction. I don't understand how we get past that. I mean, if we're gonna take this $15,000 and finance it, we can do it through a bond, where I think the developer would probably appreciate some profit because of lower costs. But then if it was through the mortgage, then the purchaser could deduct that interest from their income, their taxes assessed by the federal government. So, I don't see how, even if we postpone this, we're going to find a way to cast this rightfully and honestly as an affordability tool. In fact, I think it's doing a disservice to those that would purchase a home in the CDD area. So if anyone can enlighten me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, Commissioner Kerners, I think, and I will not speak for the developer, but I think that if we give them a month to put together a presentation, I would hope that they would have heard our concerns and come back with a lot of the answers that we didn't have today. So, I'm gonna look to now Commissioner McKinley for comment.
Yes, thank you. I didn't learn anything new today that I didn't know coming into this meeting, and so my mind is not going to change between now and June 23rd. Also, just like to point out that, as you know, I was, received a presidential appointment to the EPA's Local Government Advisory Committee and have to be in Washington on June 23rd for the first in-person meeting of that committee. And don't wanna miss an opportunity to have a vote on this, whether it goes up or down today. So I'm going to offer the second and final substitute motion on this particular item, and that would be a motion to deny the establishment of the CDD.
I have a second by Commissioner Kerners. So, we have back before us the motion to deny. Commissioner Sacks, your final word, and then I'm gonna call the vote.
Thank you. What, I have such tremendous respect for Commissioner Kerners, and I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not skilled in- know, I'm not a, I'm not skilled in federal tax issues. And if, if there is a federal tax issue in this, I need to know about it. I don't know about it today. I think it's important. So I cannot make a decision based on piecemeal information unless there's a federal agent here, and I kind of hope they're not. I'm not giving my social security number, that's for sure. But I would like to know if, if this is something that is, or is not deductible from federal income. I know mortgage interest rates are, but I don't know about this new, it's not a new, it's something we've done many times before. So I, I really would not like to rush it. This is something that's going to, it's going to affect a lot of people. And, and it's going to affect them and their home ownership, and I think that it really, we really need to, to study it before we just rush to judgment. So, thank you, Mayor. And you can play it as you want in terms of the competing motions, and I'll be fine with that.
All right, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner McKinley, can we call the vote or?
The best part about having one of your colleagues have a Master of Law degree in taxation, maybe he can answer the question.
I will wait until I vote.
All right, we're going to have a roll call on this, and the motion before us is to deny. And just for your record, that was a motion made by McKinley and seconded by Kerners.
Yes. Okay, starting with?
You need to get on your microphone.
Okay. Starting with Commissioner Bernard.
Yes.
Next is Commissioner Kerners.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
No.
Commissioner McKinley.
I have a yes from Commissioner McKinley.
Commissioner Sacks.
No.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your microphone? Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Weiss. And Mayor Weinroth?
No.
Okay, we have.
Leave the motion pass four to three. Am I correct?
Yes.
And, yes, sir.
Okay.
That is correct.
We have denied the motion to establish the Forest Oaks Community Development District. Thank you, everybody. We are going to move on now. Let's see, zoning director. All right, let's, let's take a five-minute break. I've had a request from the Vice Mayor. We'll be back at 12:30. All right, we have taken our recess. Everybody is feeling relieved, so let's move on. All right, we're on item B-12, zoning director.
Hello. This item is called Permission to Advertise. We haven't done a ULDC amendment before you in several months because as a new director, I needed to get settled a little bit, but we have two coming forward next month. One is for Westgate CRA to allow more flexibility with uses as they want to come in, and another one is related to developer agreements initiated by land development, and it's just an FYI.
Okay, so staff is recommending permission to advertise. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve the request for permission to advertise to amend the ULDC. All in favor? Approved. All against? It's approved seven to zero. That was easy. All right, planning director, got anything for us?
Not the planning director, but I think you've heard enough from planning today, so thank you.
You talk about CDDs and you know, what the heck. All right, executive director.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. Previously, we were asked to look into the issues we have in particularly in AR-zoned areas, particularly acreage with regards to semis, tractor trailers, et cetera, being parked out there. And Lisa's got a slide, so she's going to go through some of the history and some of the issues. But before we get going, there's a little bit of misinformation out there, and I just want to set the record straight that from the early 90s, vehicles over 10,000 or actually 12,500 pounds were not allowed to be parked in those types of areas. There's misinformation stating that we, the county, took the ability for them to have two of those types of vehicles away from them. That's not the case. If anything, we've lessened the restrictions out there. So I just wanted that to be on the record. Additionally, in the early 90s, there were only about 35, 3,800 homes in the acreage. That's up to about 14,000 now, and there's only about 500 more houses that can go in there. So when you put those two together, there's a lot more eyes looking at things and a lot more complaints and a lot more people. And that's why we see more of these issues start coming up. So with that, I'll let Lisa begin her presentation, and then obviously if you've got any questions afterwards, we'd be more than happy to ask what we can, you know, answer them.
Thank you. Before Ms. Amera puts her presentation up, Commissioner Kerners.
My apologies for interrupting the proceedings, Mayor. I noticed that we had started a little bit sooner than the clerk had returned back, and so if you would just maybe repeat the prior motion and vote for her benefit and for the minutes, that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, you, where were you?
B-12.
Okay, so we had a motion, who made the motion?
Mike.
Okay, the Vice Mayor made the motion, and Commissioner Sacks seconded the motion to approve the request for permission to advertise to amend the ULDC, and that was approved seven to zero. All right, let's move forward. You got your gulp of water? You ready to go?
All right, good morning. Or, no, afternoon. This is a presentation.
Did you order the pizza yet?
Yeah. This is a presentation about commercial vehicles and residential zoning, and all the pictures you're going to see pretty much are taken out in the acreage. Just so you know, the real picture is taken out by code enforcement. So what we want to talk about today is kind of the facts-based kind of discussion, because there is a lot of drama and a lot of controversy and a lot of angry people on both sides of the fence, literally with this topic. So we're trying to talk today a little bit about the facts. So the issue here is that commercial vehicles are regulated by the county and by the state and by the federal government. And in our context, in the zoning world, we regulate through the Unified Land Development Code. And I'll talk a little bit about those rules, talk about agricultural residential zoning, and then talk about some of the issues that we're seeing with these commercial vehicles in residential areas. So what brought this about is there's several code violations specifically in the acreage where property owners are storing their commercial vehicles in the residential zoning district of agricultural residential. The ULDC limits a commercial vehicle in a residential property to 1,200 and, 1,250 pounds.
12,000.
12,000, yes, thank you. That's a numbers today. 12,500 pounds, wish it was an even number. So there's several active code violations out there, and Indian Trails Improvement District has requested that the county look at options for allowing some of these vehicles out in that area of the county. So, and as I said, the ULDC, its Article 11 primarily requires commercial uses to access a minimum of an 80-foot right-of-way that is built to non-planned collector standards. In some instances, we allow a subdivision waiver or, I mean, a subdivision variance approved by the zoning commission or a Board of County Commissioners waiver to allow a commercial use on a roadway that doesn't meet this standard. As you recall, we've seen extensive amount of landscape service applications that have come before you and a lot of residents speaking out against commercial vehicles in their neighborhoods. So we have some strict rules in Article 11 because of the impacts of the weight of the vehicles on these roadways, and also we have restrictions in other part of the code as well because of compatibility and other impacts. But basically, for a commercial use, you're not allowed on a local street, and a commercial vehicle in a commercial use is not allowed on a commercial street. So the Unified Land Development Code, the land regulations part has defined commercial vehicles for many, many years, since 1992. It was even defined prior. And these are some differences. I'm going to have to switch to my glasses here to read this. And basically today, for the use regulations and for Article 6 property regulations, you're only allowed to have one commercial vehicle up to 12,000, 12,500 pounds. And Article 4, you know, outright prohibits them. And they're defined since 1992, and then now as the commercial vehicle doesn't exceed 10,000 pounds. So here we go. There was some changes in 2008 that increased the 10,000 pound number to the 12,500 pound number, and there's the definition today. Now, there's a lot of discussion about this language right here in the ULDC. So between 2008 and 2019, there was this sentence in the code. This sentence indicates and was interpreted by people to think that because the, in the AR district, you can have seven vehicles. They interpreted this to think that you can have seven commercial vehicles or more than one commercial vehicles, but that wasn't the case. The way the code is fragmented, Article 1 definitions, Article 4 uses, Article 6 parking regulations, this did not allow you to have seven commercial vehicles on your property. You were still restricted to one, and it was still restricted to that weight cap of 12,500 pounds. So, and this is another language a little bit that gets quite a bit of controversy that was, this was modified in 2019. And what the intent was in the plan and the way it was interpreted through 2019, because this is ordinance 2019-05, which gets a lot of feedback from the public, they're thinking that this change made a difference and took away their rights to have a limitless weight of commercial vehicle on their property. And that's actually not correct. It was still limited to one commercial vehicle up to 12,500 pounds. It's just that these sentences exist in different places. So again, on regulation, the federal government, state government, and the county, and in our court of ordinances, regulate vehicles on their weight because of the damage to the roadways. I mean, this is well documented. The Federal Carrier Safety Administration has strict vehicle classes and weight limits by category. So this graphic shows you come, the vehicles that are allowed under that 12,500 pound gross vehicle weight rating. Large SUVs and trucks and even a small landscape vehicle will fall under that range. So it's kind of a graphic that shows the kind of vehicles that you could expect to be allowed under that, what we call a commercial be allowed under that, what we call a commercial vehicle acceptable in these areas. And this slide, real picture is taken yesterday. You know, some of these will fall within that 12,000-pound range, some might be slightly higher, particularly the one in the bottom right. That vehicle, the front end is probably 25,000 pounds, and then the back trailer could exceed that tremendously. So there's eight different classes of vehicles and regulated by the federal government. This shows the various classes and how they're categorized, class four, class five, you're getting up to 19,000 pounds, and then six and up, you need a CDL, a commercial driver's license. And then when you're getting into the tractor-trailer, you're getting upwards of 80,000 pounds potentially, and that weight is not only for the vehicle, it's for the load, the passengers, the fuel. It's the full thing. And the FMCSA, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, limits these to up to 65 feet long, eight feet, eight and a half feet wide, and there's no cap of the height, but typically they're about 13 and a half feet tall. So talking about agricultural residential zoning, every tier in the county has agricultural residential zoning, that's about 30,000 parcels, and anything that's colored on this map other than gray, the grays, municipalities, anything that's green or yellow, those are eight, those areas are agricultural residential. In the ex-urban tier where the acreage is located, there's about 17,300 acres, and then in the acreage area, there's about 15,800 parcels, anticipated to have 15,800 homes because we anticipate every lot in here is going to get a home. So that's the graphic of the boundaries of the acreage. Every lot that is green or yellow is less than two acres. Only the ones that are blue and purple are bigger, two acres or bigger. They're very, very small lots. So again, the reason why the ULDC and the state and the federal government regulates weight limits is because of the infrastructure impacts. They are proven to damage roads, culverts, particularly in areas that are not designed to handle heavy commercial vehicles. As Scott explained in March, when we had the TRG item, there's specific standards that he will require as condition of approval for commercial uses that they upgrade the roadways to handle this, this commercial vehicle traffic. And in many instances, the maintenance of these roadways is not under our jurisdiction, as we saw with Heritage Farms. Those were privately maintained easements. It is not our expense if there's damage to the roadways, and in this instance, for the interested agency here, which is Indian Trails Improvement Districts, it's their taxpayers that pay for the improvements and such of the roadways. Here's another, just a vehicle. So in what we've seen, as the acreage has changed over since 1992, as residents move in, different residents have a different point of view of what it's like to live in a one to two-acre lot. Some residents would like to have a major commercial dump truck on their property like this one, and some wouldn't. So we get code violation complaints coming in all the time because of the visual, the noise, the hours, some of these, the bigger rigs start early in the morning to warm them up, and the residents are telling us that they are experienced, experienced through these code violation complaints, that they're experiencing negative impacts from these vehicles. There's also the potential for environmental hazards from fuel and oil. They have much bigger fuel and oil tanks than a typical car, and in these particular areas, they're often predominantly unwell and septic. And again, here's some pictures just taken, these are all taken in the acreage over the, yesterday or in the day before. So you can see all range of styles of vehicles, all sizes, all different classes that are out there today. And that's kind of their, lots of pictures. I had like 50. Thank you, Richard. So what are the options today for commercial vehicles and commercial businesses? Today, a business will come before you and they would want to do a commercial storage, and we would sit down with them and do a pre-application meeting and say, okay, you could do a contractor's storage yard, you can do that in commercial, you can do that in industrial, let's set you up with a future land use amendment application, you can come through the zoning process, and you can develop your commercial parking lot. That's what we do. There are instances, we have two or three bus depots that the school district has done under institutional and public facilities land use with, I believe, public ownership zoning, where they have recognized that there is a need to store their buses, and we don't require them to have industrial or commercial, they can do that in the institutional land use designation for their bus storage. And these uses, commercial, industrial, or public ownership in these zoning districts, they have location, hours of operation limitations, and access from, you know, land development requirements. And as you've seen again from landscape service, even when landscape service coming in, we didn't do a blanket approval for those. They have to come before the board with an individual request for a waiver for access. So, and that was the conclusion of three to four years of landscape code revision work with trying to figure out when is it okay to have a major style landscape vehicle in a neighborhood, and it was concluded that the best forum for that conversation was before the Board of County Commissioners through the waiver process. So that pretty much sums up on a factual level how the code has evolved, why we have the rules, and what do other commercial businesses and vehicles have to go through to get these kind of approvals.
In the words of Yogi Bear, "Bera, this is deja vu all over again." All right, so are we looking at lax enforcement? And that's what, you know, basically, that's why we're here, and now we have to make a decision whether it's time to go back to being strictly adhering to what's going on out there?
I wouldn't say it's lax enforcement, but what has happened, the amount of people that have moved out there, there's a lot more eyes out there, so we get a lot more complaints. Complaints, we getting anywhere about 10,000 complaints a year now through code. So it's just more eyes are looking at things and more people out there don't necessarily like what's out there. It's also, you know, just to make a point, that when folks bought out there in the last 30 years, they bought subject to these restrictions, not allowing these commercial type vehicles out there. So they're all on notice right up front that this wasn't allowed. But now, as we get complaints and we have to follow state statute, you know, it's quite easy to just drive down the street and have a code officer drive down the street. These stand out like a sore thumb, so it's quite easy to open cases on these types of things. We've got several right now that have been held in obeyance for several years now, but I just have a hard time telling residents that called me and complaining for years now what's, what's going to happen. Couple ways this can get resolved. Change the code, I don't know if that's the right answer or not. Potentially have some parcels, some large parcel out there designated by maybe ITIG or someone, something, some entity, where we could make a place for these vehicles to be stored in that particular area. Or last resort here in front of a magistrate, and if they win the argument, they get to keep their truck there. If they don't, they have to move it within a reasonable time. So that's kind of where we are. We're not on the hunt out there, but we do get calls, so we do have to go and do our job. That's our job is to enforce the rules that were passed by this board and previous boards. So yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we are.
Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. I want to thank the residents for being, being patient. This was a conversation I had with constituents back, I think, in 2019. So it's been three years. Couple things have happened since then, COVID being one of them, kind of derailed things. The other thing that happened is I had requested, based on the acknowledgement from Indian Trail Improvement District in conversation about the potential damage to their infrastructure. I don't want 10 years from now or 20 years from now, when some of us aren't still up here for Indian Trail Improvement District and residents to come and complain and say that it's the county's fault because of our rules that their infrastructure is failing and try to demand some sort of compensation for improvements. And so I had requested from the executive director of the improvement district, a written acknowledgement that that was the case. He, my office has not received it. The only, we received a phone call that he would refuse to write, provide that in writing due to pending lawsuits with the town, the city of Westlake and the developer of Westlake Minto. And so we don't have any written acknowledgement from them, and that, waiting on that caused the delay in this coming forward to us, but I got to a point where we promised, I promised my constituents, we would at least direct staff to take a look at this, and it was time that we needed to come back and at least have a conversation. But I just want to ask staff, this isn't a conversation about this type of traffic being allowed in the acreage area, because I believe, I would assume, Seminole Pratt-Witney, Northlake, and Okeechobee Boulevard are constructed in such a manner that they can accommodate this type of traffic coming through.
Yeah, I mean, that's correct. Those are major thoroughfare roads, Northlake, Orange, Seminole Pratt, Okeechobee, correct?
And so the conversation, in order to stay within those federal and those state guidelines of traffic or truck weight on particular roads, really extends to the local roads, the Indian Trail Improvement District roads, and whatever county roads we own in that area, and the, the parking, right? So we're not talking to, I just want to be very clear, we're not talking about that type of truck, truck traffic coming through the area. Okay. They're shaking their head. Yes, so-
Well, real, I'm sorry, but-
For the people watching at home.
I was just going to say, you know, the, the difference between this and like the, the landscape services was they were seeking an approval within the residential neighborhood. Sort of if there was a, an application that went through zoning to do a commercial or industrial use in, you know, the acreage or some other area like that, then, you know, they would be, that's where we'd look at into the actual access through the neighborhood and the roads themselves.
Okay, could you put the map up that shows the AR-zoned areas of the county? Oops. So I, I'm, we're here today talking about complaints we've received in the acreage. We know how the one on that south end, how Heritage Farms feels about these types of operations, and we've handled that one. Outside of those two areas, or let's just focus on the acreage right now, have any of the other, maybe I look to my colleagues, have any of you received a request to allow this type of change in any of the AR areas that are within your district?
Commissioner Moreno.
All I've heard is, please do not allow these rigs in the private, in the community similar to Jupiter Farms or Palm Beach Country Estates. Not with, because the roads, the conditions arose, who owns the roads? They're not built for that type of infrastru, that infrastructure's not built to handle that heavy equipment.
So you're not getting any constituents asking you to allow these-
No.
-rigs to be parked on their property?
No.
Okay, so with that in mind, one of my concerns is not trying to push something through that because of the request from a certain number of constituents in a very particular area of the county that is going to have an impact in other areas of the county that are similarly zoned that don't want it. So I'm looking at staff, is an overlay in the acreage really the only option that would specifically limit this just to that part of the county?
I think it would be a start, but I think that each individual should be subject to the same rules that the landscape service folks have to meet as well, because we're requiring them to come out and ask through the waiver. I, I don't know that a blanket approval to allow every vehicle without some kind of special permit issued by the district, I mean, that's one thing that's really interesting in our code of ordinances and in our state statute, there's, if a vehicle exceeds the weight limit that is projected by the engineers to be suitable for a vehicle, there is an ability for the state or the federal government or a local government to issue a special permit. And considering that these roadways are designed to an engineering standard that I don't understand because I'm not an engineer, but Scott shared them with me yesterday, and it was a bunch of numbers, I imagine that the Indian Trails Improvement District knows the construction adequate for their dirt roads and knows the design of them enough to demonstrate that they can certify or issue a special permit for individual vehicles that could absolve us from any kind of liability as well. I'm really concerned about a blanket approval that would let every, I mean, if there's 15,000 lots, 15,000 semis, not everyone is going to have one, but, you know, I would recommend that even with an overlay, we had some sort of written documentation on a case by case, maybe, from Indian Trails Improvement District, and also some board approval process to allow the public to be heard. But again, it's extremely controversial, and the idea of neighbors coming out against neighbors over their big rigs, I, you know, I, it's a challenge because, you know, compared to the neighborhood coming out, most of the time we're before you, we have a new plan development or a new commercial plaza, and the people are coming out against the business that's coming in. This is a business that's coming into my neighborhood. These are, you know, this is an idea with, whether an overlay or a special permit, however, how we do it, these are people against people with each person wanting to have, one person wanting to do what they want to in their yard, and another person saying, I can see and hear and smell what you're doing in your yard, and it's infecting my infrastructure. So I think it's a challenge whether either overlay permit or board approval. But it's, an overlay would be a start, but I don't think it would be the end-all because I still think we would need an approval.
And it's also, it's not, it's not just the roads, it's the noise. We have noise ordinance, it's the hours of operation, it's the home occupation standards we have in the ULDC. When you park multiple semis on your property, does it, does it start to lose the essential character of a residential neighborhood? Those types of things also come into play that would also need to be looked at.
Right, and I'm not talking about multiple commercial vehicles parked on properties. I'm talking, this isn't landscape services, we're operating a business with multiple vehicles coming and going out of a residential neighborhood. The difference here is they're talking about being able to park their vehicle on, at their home and when they're not working. I'm, I'm trying to find a balance here, and you know, recognizing what our country is struggling with right now. I'm recognizing the property values in our county and the lack of, of options for some of these independent rig owners. Is really the, the answer for the acreage to incorporate and make their own rules?
I mean, that would make our lives a lot easier. We wouldn't have, you know, code enforcement wouldn't have to go out there. The acreage can custom design whatever land development regulations they want and they own code enforcement, and they can pick and choose what they would like, subject to the whim of their residents.
May I reserve any more comments till after we hear public comment?
All right, well, thankfully, down in D4, we don't have this problem, so we'll defer to better minds than me. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I know you didn't get the letter from Indian Trails Improvement District, but I bet if you asked Sir Wicket or if you asked Lake Worth Ridge District, they would give you some sort of notification as to roadway improvement and heavy, heavy equipment on it. So there are other, other entities that can weigh, that can weigh in that are in a similar situation. So, just my two cents.
All right, we have five cards. Let's hear what our public has to say.
All right, our first speaker will be Osvaldo Garcia. Did you want to speak, or do you want me to read your comments? Okay, the comment, it does say that he wished to speak, but there are comments, the- I don't know.
Now you're giving it to me.
I'm phoning a friend.
All right, I think if you want your comments heard, you're going to have to come up to the microphone. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Oscar Montoya. Good afternoon, everyone. I buy my home in 2014. Before I buy my home, I go into the city and I see the law permit have a commercial vehicle, and he tell me I can have two commercial vehicle. And then, when I buy my home, I got two impression- And then, when I bought my home, I got two impression, we, and that impression, I got the picture, and he say, yes, we can have two commercial vehicle. It's not my interpretation, he's the interpretation for the inspector in that moment. Something more, we do a meeting in 2019, we over 100 resident, we, every single resident agreed to have two commercial vehicle in that moment. No one is vote for no, no one. So, in my case, that affect to my family and my home, because my decision for buy that house is for he permit to do that. Something more, all that is three, don't have, eh, the truck restriction. Um, a lot of business around there, PGA, GNG, a lot of farmers, basically is our neighbors who, more of the truck cross every single day is not for the resident. All of the noise is not for the resident, is for the business, not only for the business inside, you know, outside, because when the truck from the, eh, the land for Osceola or something like that, I don't know the name, all that truck cross from seminar nor lake. Eh, something more important, I got my mind, I forget, but I think this is the more important thing to what I want to say. I know a lot of more thing is important, but we, we know of course, we got some maybe neighbors, he don't like it, but the more of the neighbor, we got like 30% of the person got any kind of commercial vehicle, and the other maybe 50% he want to get the right and the, he can get some commercial vehicle in any point. Eh, well, thank you for the time for listen to me, I'm sorry for my English, it's really rough, but thank you to.
You did very good, thank you, appreciate your comments.
Oscar, whereabouts do you live, sir? Where-whereabouts do you live?
I live in, in Okeechobee Road, in the San Okeechobee.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next speaker will be Natalia Malian.
Good afternoon, my name is Natalia Malian. Um, I wanted to talk to you guys about this, when we met back in 2019 with Commissioner McKinley, as well as many other people.
Can you give the microphone to tug down, just so it's a little closer to you? Thank you.
Sorry, can you hear me better? Okay, so, basically, I wanted to point out, regardless whether we park or not park the trucks, you're still gonna have the noise, you're still gonna have the damage to the roads, because those roads have trucks passing by all the time. That's not gonna stop, we have many businesses. I have lists, I have emails I've sent out with all the names, if you want, I could go over them, you know, I think it's a bit too much to go over them right now, because I've sent them out, and we have support from Indian Trail, saying, you know, that the actual roads, at the end of the day, they're, the damage that occurs, they take care of it, you know? It's not something that's coming out of the county's pocket. And we pay for our road taxes, we pay for everything, and we honestly don't think that it's an issue to park the truck in our homes. I don't know how that affects anybody, because at the end of the day, you're still gonna see the trucks coming by. You know, sorry, I wasn't prepared for this, I just found out yesterday that the minute was gonna occur, if not, I would have definitely been more prepared, and I will have many other people out here, because I know a lot of people were supporting us, we have many papers of the amendment that we tried to do, we have hundreds of signatures from all of our neighbors. And just in my road, for example, I'm on Is Pleasure, I have three of our neighbors have trucks in that road, and all the other people that don't have, I know all my neighbors, none of them have ever told me that it bothers them, my noise, that the truck, I don't know, damages the road, because the road is perfectly fine, and we drive by there all the time. So I'm not understanding why this is all based off on road damage and what it can occur when that's not the case, you're still gonna have the trucks coming by. So I just don't understand, it doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Kerner, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for your comments. Could you give the board just a little bit of context, um, in your personal situation? Is it an 18-wheeler?
I have, yeah.
Is it parked, um, you know, for weeks at a time? Does it travel? What are we dealing with?
We have an 18-wheeler, and we only have one with the trailer driving. We travel all the time, it's my husband, we own a company, I'm the one that does everything for the company, I look for the loads and manage, we have more than seven different trucks in our company right now. They all have, you know, their trucks parked at their properties, and we have our own. And my husband's usually out for like 14, 15 days. So I don't know how it affects somebody to have the truck come in, you know, after 14 days, have it parked, not started or anything, it's off, the engine's completely off. We go out with our kids, you know, we enjoy our lives, we do our things, three, four days he spends home and leaves again, you know, so what does it, you know, come back to? Given us, we moved out of Miami, Florida, because of the same reason, I had to drive out about an hour and a half to a yard to pick him up every time he got home. Sometimes he'll only come home for like two days, so imagine, I have to drive out an hour and a half, come back, see the kids for what, a day, if, if anything, take him back again. You know, it's, it's not fair to us, we do a lot of work and many days out of the house, and all we want is to get home, park, and enjoy our family, you know?
And when it's parked, it's, it's off, there's no generator running or anything?
Not.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker will, actually does not want to speak, but, uh, it's George or Jorge Alfaro. I urgently need the attention, next week I have a hearing on this issue about truck parking in Loxahatchee. Last agreement, we were allowed to have at least one truck.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, very good. Um, and then our next speaker does not wish to speak, Ricardo Alonso, I want to know what will happen with commercial vehicles semi-truck parking?
I want to talk.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah.
We will change your card to a check mark, and you have three minutes.
Are you Ricardo, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Please begin.
All right, my name is Ricardo Alonso, I've been truck driver for like five year, uh, at that time, you know, life is hard for a truck driver, I've been out like two, three weeks working, and then, you know, I have two little kids, so I have to be those days out. So we moved here to Loxahatchee to have like more time spending with my family. So, we decided to buy the house, but thinking that we are allowed to have like two trucks, that was what we told, and Robert, he left to Miami right now, I think, so that's what he told us in the last meeting. We are allowed to have two truck, but right now they changed the law, we are telling us, so we are kinda, you know, stressed out. So, in, I'm talking about like the damage of the road. We're still going to have truck passing by your house, because to pick my, like, um, like the garbage, so truck is gonna weigh more than 80,000 pounds. So, and about, uh, the noises, probably a, a single car do more noises than my truck. It's like, like the 18-wheelers. So, and about mechanical, we need to have the truck in good shape, without oil leak, without fuel leaks, that is not true, because if, if DOT catch us with, uh, oil leak or something like that, we go out of service and it's a huge, a huge final loss. So your life is really hard, I go all around, I see like trucks parked everywhere, all the farmers, because we live in outer culture area, all the farmer have the rigs on the yard, and I never see complaint. And I think on hubstead, the, on commercial residential, they are allowed to have trucks. I'm not aware exactly of that, but we are having this problem right now, and we have a lot of stress on, you know, on your community. And we are like, probably more than, I say, 150, 170 people, because we don't bring them, because we all know about this yesterday, so we didn't have any time to show up. So, I, I think, you know, we need, we need your help.
Thank you very much, we hear you. Commissioner Kerner anymore? All right. All right, obviously, this is a situation that needs to be addressed, but I don't think we want a knee-jerk reaction and just to start enforcing with, uh, out recognizing what is the realities out there. Commissioner McKinley?
Let me see if I can try to bring this in for...
A soft landing?
Some sort of landing. Um, I don't, I certainly don't want the conversation, uh, to end today. And my apologies to my constituents that, uh, my office didn't notify you via my social media page until Monday? What day is it? Tuesday, I think it went up on Tuesday, or maybe it went up yesterday, I don't know. Um, I, I had instructed my staff to make sure as soon as we received word from our staff that this conversation was going to take place, to alert the public, and found out at the last minute that hadn't happened yet, so that one is on me. Um, what I would like to do, I don't want this to affect other areas of the county, nobody is asking for it, uh, except the acreage. I would like to ask staff to initiate conversations with the Indian Trail Improvement District on a potential overlay, that would very specifically outline some sort of rules and process to allow for this. Um, and I would like to, you know, a starting point of those conversations to be an absolute restriction on the number of vehicles that could be parked. Uh, I think staff has cleared up the misconception that at one point you were allowed to, and now you're not allowed none, um, I think that was a misunderstanding, that was never the case. Uh, they were commercial vehicles up to a certain weight limit, um, and that is still allowed, but the ones over 12.5, and actually, it was 10, and you increased it to 12.5, anything over that weight was never allowed. Uh, and so I think there was some confusion on that. But let's see if we can work with Indian Trail Improvement District, come up with an overlay proposal, and let's let the public ham, hammer this out, you know? We'll bring something back for a, a very public hearing, and I think we're gonna hear from constituents on both sides, those that want it and those that don't. Uh, but bring something back for us that we take a formal vote on, and very limited to the acreage area. And I'm gonna ask you, since my time is ticking up here, um, what you think is a reasonable amount of time for you to be able to do that and bring something back to us?
I think it's gonna be dependent upon Indian Trails Improvement District, they've been, you know, talking about this for quite some time, and their concepts are referendums or overlays without any level of detail whatsoever on, is it a limitless weight vehicle? Is it up to a certain size? Um, the majority, from looking at the pictures, are not the 18-wheelers, the majority are the smaller classes from, you know, five and six. Um, we really need that level of detail in their participation, so we can reach out to them today. But, um, we're, we're really going to want them to, you know, they are the voice of the community, they have their monthly meetings, they have an excellent turnout, they have the local, you know, finger on the pulse of the community. So I think, um, uh, working forward a minimum of two to three months, but, um, it's gonna come really to them. I mean, if, if we want, would want to adopt something by the end of October, we'll need, well, two months, we'll have to be back with something, I think.
So, uh, a, a maximum of 90 days, would that be reasonable, assuming that you have participation from the district?
Yes. Yeah, I think, um, we should be able to have something back here for permission to advertise style by, in three months, I think. And then that would, what is it, May, June, July? Yeah, we would have, we would have to, to keep on track.
Okay, and then we ask the director a question, is there a way we can postpone magistrate hearings for 90 days?
I can potentially, um, you know, I just have a hard time when people call me, and it's been postponed now for three years. And it's one thing if it's postponed for three years and they've stopped operating, but no one stopped operating, so, um, that's a, let me get back to you, let me, let me speak to the new code enforcement director and see, and the officers that are out there, and see if this is picking up or not picking up, or, you know, is this the same as it was for Landscape Services? We have done in the past, like Landscape Services done agreed orders in front of the magistrate, and give them a certain amount of time to come to compliance, to have whatever works through the process, go through the process, that's another option, um, so it's just not an open end, you know, free for all. Um, so that's something that we can, we can look into. So let me get to my, uh, code enforcement director and some of the code officers, and then I can, I can get back to you on, on that.
Okay.
But at this point, I'm a little bit apprehensive to continue extending and extending and extending.
Okay. And then I would just, I'm just disappointed that nobody from Indian Trail Improvement District's Board of Supervisors or from their staff are, is here. Um, I, I hope that doesn't signal their participation level moving forward, but would encourage them, while I never took a position on their local bill to incorporate, and I probably still won't, I, I would inform them that that's probably a parallel, uh, option that they want to continue to seek, to alleviate some of these concerns. But that would be my staff direction, I hope that was clear enough.
I think it's clear, and again, I'm happy we're not having this issue down in District Four. All right, ready to move on. All right, Assistant County Administrator, your hair grew a little longer since last time I looked over there.
There's nothing, it's good to be here.
Very good. All right, time for Commissioner comments, let's start from the left to right. Commissioner Sacks, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've all done an incredibly good job in understanding all these issues and looking at pictures of huge rigs, but I think that, uh, I would like to propose, um, I was in the, I was in the Senate when we passed a law that, that municipalities were not allowed, or local governments were not allowed to pass any laws, ordinances regarding firearms. And I understand the penalties are severe. But I would like us to look into the possibility of zoning, um, we looked into zoning with regard to, 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 to big rigs. I'd like to see, uh, discussion or review of zoning with regard to, uh, gun shows and, um, uh, and also those, uh, retail outlets that sell guns, uh, firearms. I know that there is one very close to a high school that's in my district, I mean, it's bicycle distance. So I don't know if we can do this, I have to look at our attorney, but, um, it would certainly be interesting if we could review the, uh, laws with regard to zoning and those, uh, I know there's strict zoning with regard to retail outlets that sell, um, medical marijuana. Um, I don't know about the municipalities coming aboard with this, but I think it would be a, a good thing to review in terms of what authority we have left in the state to require a certain, um, certain retail outlets, uh, location in our, in our community.
All right, well, I think that, uh, we're gonna probably find that's been pretty well locked down by our friends up north, but I see no reason why we can't get a report from our council with respect to that going forward.
We will look into that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Bernard, I understand you have a couple of off-site proclamations?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, wow, I'd like to make a motion to approve two off-site, uh, proclamation. One, recognizing, uh, the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Hall of Fame, and also one off-site recognition recognizing Carl Bucard for his over 30 years of service to the school district.
Seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, show that is approved unanimously. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner, you're up.
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, come on, you must have something. Let's talk about CDDs.
Maybe they should apply for a CRA instead of a CDD.
All right, send that back to them as a suggestion. Commissioner McKinley, what you got?
Uh, I think I've talked enough today, I'm good, thank you.
We want to hear about, uh, Alaska, how, how is it up there?
Um, I will tell you that, uh, what I, my takeaway, um, for those of you watching, I sit on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties, and once a year, uh, one of our four Board of Directors meeting is held in a western state, and so this year that Board of Directors meeting was held in Anchorage, and we had the opportunity to go and meet with the Director of Alaska's IFIS. of Alaska's IFIS, for lack of a better term, and really learned the struggles of food insecurity for the state of Alaska. They only have a stockpile for four days for, for their entire state and we are very blessed to have the Everglades agricultural area in our county and in our state. We are very blessed to have the muck soils, they are actually having to construct their soil to be able to accommodate any type of plant growth. And we are very lucky that we've got the port of Palm Beach. In the early days of COVID, we learned that when the governor of the state of Washington was looking to close the port of Seattle, it would have shut off all the food supply to Alaska and they had to, governor had to call the other governor and say, please don't do that or my, my people can't eat. And it was just very, very eye-opening, I think we take for granted our, particularly our western county agricultural community that feeds half the nation a good part of the year, we're very blessed here in Palm Beach County, that was my takeaway, among a lot of other things, but that was a learning experience, thank you.
Welcome back. Commissioner Moreno?
I have no comments, thank you.
Oh, okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I'll be brief, I just want to congratulate the BDB, today they were selected as the Business of the Year by the Chamber of the Palm Beaches and appreciate all the good work that they do and, and was glad to see them recognized also. I mean, there were a lot of great organizations that were recognized, the Cultural Council was up for an award as Nonprofit of the Year, but they, they did not achieve that, but they, they still, it's good to see that they were recognized, as well as just a myriad of just great organizations throughout the county, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Vice. Going to ask you to take care of that for me, please.
Sorry, and I'd like to reappoint Spencer Siegel, the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed, show that is approved unanimously, seven to zero. Okay, just very quickly, before this meeting today, I had the privilege of delivering an off-site proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. And since we are going to have Memorial Day weekend, I'm hoping that our residents will continue to be smart and safe, put on a life preserver if you're out there, especially with children on these boats, please don't go speeding through the intercoastal because it's causing damage to the property and also we've had some unfortunate accidents and people who've died. Please be safe this Memorial Day weekend and we are adjourned.